Are we good on the back? Great. Good evening. It is Monday, September 23rd, 2019. I think that means summer is over and it is now fall, which is fine. That's a wonderful time of the year. And let's call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
All present. The whole band is here. Good evening again. It is Monday, September 23rd. We'll start with consent agenda as normal. We have approval of town council minutes from August 26th, the regular meeting. Counselor Perry abstains. And September 9th, that was an executive session. We acknowledge receipt of minutes from the Tiverton Personnel Board, April 3rd, April 25th, May 14th, May 21st, June 6th, June 13th, July 9th, August 20th, September 3rd, and October 8th. Says 2018. I guess that's right. Okay. So they've been busy writing up minutes. Open space and land preservation, the planning board, and the cemetery commission. We acknowledge receipt of our treasurer's August budget and revenue report. We have a proclamation to the town council for Red Ribbon Week. That would be October 23rd to the 31st, 2019, requested by the Fall River Young Marines. I'll read that after the consent agenda vote. Approval of tax assessor abatements and a memorandum regarding the proposed recycle and landfill sites from our planning board chair, Ms. Susan Gill. Are there any items to be removed for further consideration?
A1, please.
A1, okay. Any others? All right. Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve all consent agenda items other than A1? And if it is approved, I will read the proclamation.
Submoved.
A second. All those in favor? Thank you. unanimous? I will find it. You don't have anybody here from the Fall River Young Marines by chance? Whereas, communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas, there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas, governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas, the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, the Drug Enforcement Administration Agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23 through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. And now therefore, the Tiverton Town Council does hereby proclaim October 23 through 31 as Red Ribbon Week in Tiverton, and urges all citizens to join them in this special observance. Next, we'll move on to public presentations, announcements, and comments. First, we have a presentation and discussion on the Bay Street remediation and sewers. I think our administrator will lead that discussion.
What is his name here? Lee Royce here?
I think he's hiding back there.
I'm going to ask Bob Hoffman and Kerry. Hi Kerry. Would you come forward and maybe sit here so that when there are questions, you can answer them?
I'm sorry. I should talk into the microphone. I'm actually going to try to do the presentation somewhat quickly based on the meeting that the three of us had. This is a follow-up on a presentation that we had earlier in the year. And Kerry is the somewhat new executive director of the Tiverton Waste Water District. Oops, that's the wrong one. Let's see. I need to get to it. I'll get there.
I like that. I might just stay over here.
No, I don't know. I may need help. I had it before, but... Hello? Can you?
Easy, easy.
You help me get to that. I had it before. That costs more money. Who do you need?
I really like it here. You do? I like it over here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was trying to set it up ahead of time. So Kerry is the relatively new executive director of the Tiverton Waste Water District, the chair of the board, Leroy Kendricks is here as well, and Bob Hoffman is with Hoffman Engineering and has been involved in the Bay Street area remediation for quite some time now, as you may remember from the last time. See how we do this? How do I get full screen?
Press up at the top. Down. Over there.
Top right, rather right.
Usually you can press there and... No, it didn't work. Okay, then press up at the top there.
I'll do the slideshow.
There you go.
Okay. So, the purpose of today's presentation is to update the council as well as residents on the status of the investigation as well as remediation of the contamination in the Bay Street area. Also, the status of the installation of sewer and of sewer connections. The proposed next steps, first in terms of the sewer connections and next in terms of the sewer installation, including in particular the disposal of contaminated soil. Associated with all of this, to the extent they are available now, some cost estimates and then some observations about funding, or at least I think there will have to be discussion about that. You may remember this slide. This is just an aerial indicating which general area we're talking about. This is the same area indicating the streets that actually are the responsibility, or at least the contaminated soil underneath under the settlement agreement, is the responsibility of the town. This is a visual that indicates the kind of work that is involved in investigating a particular parcel, including in some instances, a lot of borings and testing and what have you, ultimately to help decide whether remediation is required or soil removal and remediation, and if so, where. So it's not usually the entire parcel. Usually it's parts of that. And Bob, please correct me if I misrepresent anything, which is unintentional. This is again, an overview of the neighborhood indicating the status of remediation. The different colors indicate whether there has been a... In the blue is a letter of compliance from the state saying that no further work is required. The brown orange color is where the remediation is complete and an environmental land use restriction has been put in place, or in two cases, is ready to be put in place, it still needs to be signed. The green areas are parcels that have been investigated, but no problems were found. You see some, three or four yellow properties. Those are commercial properties. They're basically included in the overall approach to investigations and remediation. And then there is one property with this purplish color and a red dot in the middle of it, and that is the town-owned park property. This is that town-owned property, and I'll have a few more observations about that just down the line. I also need to get my... Actually, going back to that, I'll do it now. On this parcel, the investigation is in fact complete, and there is sufficient information to support a particular remedial alternative, which would be no more further investigation or remediation, just an environmental land use restriction. That is a decision for the town to make. The alternative is to in fact do more investigation and see what we find. It is not required. It is not recommended. And the use that was there or is there can continue, as well as some improvements can continue, although it would need to be done in consultation with DEM to make sure they don't have a particular concern. I will mention that in the top part of that, there are drainage issues that would need to be addressed as well. The environmental land use restriction allows continued recreational use. Next is again the area with delineated the sewer, both the sewer that has been installed, which is in green, and the sewer that is proposed to be installed in blue. I should add that there is additional sewer that has been installed, in particular in the area closer to the current casino location, but that's outside the Bay Street area. This is a visual to sort of give a graphic illustration of why we're talking about soil remediation. When a pipe has to go in, you need to do excavation. The excavation can be in relatively clean soil, or it can be in, and in most instances here, is contaminated soil. A lot of that particular soil can be put back, but a lot of it also needs to be disposed of in Johnston. And that comes back into the picture when we're talking about the street a little bit down the line. This is again that picture of where the sewer has been installed and is proposed to be installed. You see several dots here. Two of them are red. They are proposed as pilot projects to connect those properties to the existing sewer and Bay Street. In addition, there are other abutting properties in this area where people still need to be tying in. Some people in that area have tied in. A lot of them have not. There is a mistake in this particular thing here, that the abutters meeting on the 26th is for these abutters. It's not. It's actually for the abutters in the other area, because there sewer connections can proceed but for the abutters doing their piece. In this case, actually, the sewer connections cannot proceed except in those pilot projects that the Waste Water District decided to go forward with, just to illustrate what it will take, how much it will cost, et cetera, et cetera. In the other locations, you run into the issue of part of the connection will be in the right-of-way of Bay Street. And that part is in the public right-of-way and therefore, the town's responsibility. So some decision and action is needed on the part of the town to be able to move forward The pilot project is actually proceeding either later this month or early next month. The additional abutting properties, we don't know, but a plan and a schedule can be put together once we know whether the town will be able to take care of its part. What we were hoping, and by we, I mean the three of us, as we talked about this, that if everything works out and moves forward and we can get funding for what is needed in this particular case for the abutting properties, then we could plan for construction starting in July of 2020. So that's a possible goal. It's doable, but it requires resolution of the funding situation. Speaking of which, the costs would be most efficiently carried by the town if we worked together with the contractors for the property owners. Because to the extent excavation is needed on that property, they're responsible for that. More likely than not, it's just one contractor doing the excavation as well as the installation of the sewer. So you really want to work with that contractor if at all possible, and only pay the proportionate part of the cost, rather than have separate contracts and the separate overhead associated with that. If we use those assumptions, the estimated cost is about $100,000. It was $85,000 in an earlier version. By now, the cost, we're estimating that it will be higher than before. So for practical purposes and also for purposes of the budget process, the estimate is $100,000. Then when we're talking about next steps in terms of new sewer main, the recommended priority is Conanica Street, also known as Cananica Street in Tiverton. And one of the reasons is that you have a larger number of properties abutting that street, as well as failing septic systems, and you have the number of parcels that can be tied in. So you have sort of the greatest impact on the whole problem with failing septic systems if you start with Cananica Street. The other priority, from a different perspective, would be Lower Judson Street, because that's where you have some serious environmental issues, which on the one hand makes it a priority to go as soon as we can, on the other hand, also raises the cost. And so at this point, it's difficult to estimate when we could actually move forward with that. Another one, that's sort of a logical one to take early on, is Hooper Street. And I hope you can read it. It's the second from the bottom there. And you see an interruption between the west and the east side. It may well be necessary to extend that blue line towards what is really the bottom of Bottom Street, so that we can thereby basically get all the properties that we need to be able to tie in. On these next steps, what we can say is that preliminary, only preliminary engineering has been done by the engineering company consulting for the district, that's AECOM. What still needs to be done is an update of earlier plans by McGuire, I believe. And then what is important to note is that as we move forward and hopefully can start planning for these and some of the other streets, it is absolutely important that we coordinate with other utilities. So the water district, it may be, there may be an interest on the part of the gas company to be involved as well. And last but not least, DPW, because there is quite a bit of drainage work that needs to be done. Leaving it up to the different entities to do it on their own schedule is not a very smart way of going about this, because you would have multiple years of, you know, paving, then breaking up the paving, then paving again, and in the meantime, a lot of impact on the neighborhood. So that leads to the point that we really need to get together a sort of a core team to make that coordination happen. In the first instance, between the town and the district, but then also with the property owners and their contractor and what have you, as well as the water district and maybe other utility companies. Also, to make this happen, we would need to get, and by we, I'm meaning collectively, the district really needs to get more funding from the United States Department of Agriculture, which has been the source of funding for the sewer work that has been done, and also the next phase of sewer work, which as you may have learned from the newspaper, is now moving forward with construction expected to start in April. And it looks as if USDA remains interested in funding, but a lot of it depends obviously on how we update the plans and get our combined strategy together. These are the other streets that need to be done. In the case of A. Connell, we actually had a preliminary cost estimate for the cost of soil removal as well as remediation, which can also include disposal. That was an earlier estimate by Hoffman Engineering. We're currently sticking with that, I believe. I don't know if the district has estimates, it does not, for the sewer work in these areas. This would be down the line, obviously. And what I'm sort of aiming to is that we could get started with Cananica Street and start planning for some regular funding of ongoing soil removal and remediation in the area. That doesn't mean necessarily only the town budget. It can mean joint pursuit of grants, other grants, whether it's USDA, a different program, or maybe other programs that we can talk to. Town parcel, I have already said, the next step there is really to make the decision to go with the alternative of environmental land use restriction, which I think is a no-brainer, but if you have questions about it, you might want to ask that question tonight. The preparation is not a big deal, because lots of ELURs have been prepared in this area and are being prepared in other contaminated areas. I think the approximate cost is estimated at about $1,500. That's a ballpark estimate. GL may wish to differ with that, but that's what we currently think. So that in and of itself is a relatively low cost. What we do need to do is evaluate how serious the drainage problem is, what the best solution is, and get RIDEM approval for whatever we propose to do there. And Bob may be able to talk a little bit more about that if there are questions about this particular parcel, which is town-owned. So that actually gets us to the last slide. We're supposed to. Oops, there we go. Town actions that arguably are needed on the short term. First is, I think, support from the town for what the district is trying to do, which is to, in the first instance, have the abutters in the other area signing up and step up to do their piece, because their neighbors already have done so. But then also to start working with the abutters in the Bay Street area to get them on board as we hopefully move along with the planning for the remediation and sewer installation in the streets. Secondly, we need to facilitate what I call coordinated planning by the district, the other utilities, and DPW, so that we can develop reasonably detailed plans, as well as timeframes, cost estimates, and the funding strategy. That's actually beginning to happen. There's a plan to meet in February, March, in that timeframe, to start talking about maybe that next phase that we could be doing and get some of the key players together to start making sure that we do this in a coordinated way. I have some experience with this, actually a fair amount of experience at Warrant, where we had a streetscape project, as well as a sewer project in Water Street. And Water Street is notorious for its old utilities, so we had issues with the gas lines, we had issues with the water lines, and nobody had thought about how we could do this all at once, instead of over three or four or five years. It can be done. It has been proven. It's probably the best for everybody if we do that. It can ultimately save us some money too, if we do it in that particular fashion. The last action item that I think is very important, not necessarily for tonight, but as we move into the budget process, is to allocate $100,000 for what is needed in terms of soil removal and remediation in Cananica Street, or as the next phase. I'm going to leave it at that, and we'll open it up to questions that you may have for our guests, or myself. If you won't, don't mind, I'll do this for the chair. We start with the council, but we definitely will get to you.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I guess I'll just take the first question. So the Cananica's estimate was something a little north of 200. Why would we just look for 100?
No, I think that slide's wrong. That's actually, it should be for Bay Street.
It is, yes.
So the next thing would be tying in 14...
12.
12. We'll do two initially, then the remaining 12 of the 14.
So along Bay Street, there's a total of 14 residents, and two of them are in our pilot program right now, expected to be connected before the end of October for sure. Then we have 12 remaining residents along Bay Street. The only thing that stands in their way of connecting is the matter of this contaminated soil in the right-of-way. It amounts to 405 cubic feet of contaminated soil. The original estimate for that in March of 2017 was $85,000, but now due to increased tipping fees at the landfills and just increased costs overall, we're estimating $100,000 for that soil removal. That is just the soil that's in the public right-of-way.
The all-in cost to do it all?
Yeah.
Like 3 million, something?
No.
For all the streets? For all the streets and the sewers, 2 to 3 million's a good estimate. We have to, we'd have to take the actual high design plans and look at each lateral and what we know about those areas, but that's not a bad estimate for the whole, all the roadways in that area.
More efficient to do it all at once?
Pay it would be.
And then there's cost of the homeowners on top of that? That's just the town hit?
The private connection, it would be on the homeowners, and the homeowners are certainly at their own liberty to use their own contractors. It would just be more efficient to use contractors who have all been trained in this remediation disposal. And that would be the, since it would be most efficient, that would be most cost-efficient as well.
And the other thing that needs to be mentioned is that the homeowners are eligible for a loan program.
Yep.
Similar to what we have for septic systems.
Yep, that's the sewer tie-in loan fund program. And as an example, for our two pilot connections, both of those connections are coming in at under $8,000. The sewer tie-in loan program is up to $10,000. And you can also roll in your connection fee of $2,700 into that program. So, and you have 1% interest and five years to pay that back. There's no income requirements on that either.
Floor's open. Any questions or comments?
I have a question on the ELUR on the town-owned parcel. Is that a no dig, no soil disturbance? What's the...
Right, so the soil management plan that we put together in draft is, so that's attached to the ELUR. So basically, it wouldn't be digging more than two feet, because the contamination that we, if you saw on the slide, was two to four feet. And so the upper two feet, there was a whole series of borings done, so we know the upper two feet throughout the entire park is fine. So your normal maintenance of your playground equipment and stuff like that would be fine. And before we did the basketball court, if that's upgraded, we would just let DEM know, but that shouldn't be requiring more than two feet unless we have to go through major drainage stuff. So that would be it. And then the only other caveat is, but we have to do one of the roads, it'd be about, because we're doing the roads anyway, it'd be about $200 a year, just inspection, and we, that we send into the DEM to say that we've looked at the park and everything's still the same.
Thank you.
I just need to ask, this question is probably going to make people upset, but I think it needs to be asked. Why at the time when there was the payout, was it $11 million? Why weren't the homeowners just paid and they moved out and you just called it a day?
Right. That was one of the options.
Because now we've got all of this, right? It should have just been, I'm just going to say it, condemned, covered over, looked like a park or whatever, and everyone just ups and buys another house.
That was one option.
You have to ask it.
Yep. Yep, I think that buyout option came in at like 35 million or so. Yep.
$35 million, and they could have bought a new house somewhere.
$35 million for the whole.
For the whole thing. And then cover it and make it into a whatever.
Right.
But some of these people have lived there all their lives.
Well, that's a problem. You've got one family, multiple generations live in the same house. Yeah.
So now, so now we have where the towns got to pay. Everybody has to pay for this, right?
Well, I figure these people have been paying taxes all these years living there, too, so they've been putting money back into the town.
You've got people paying taxes in the other places that are going to have sewage, and yet they have to pay it, and the town's not paying it. They have to come up with the money. I'm just asking a question. Like, I don't know what the answer is, but...
Can I comment on that, maybe?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. So, obviously, there's a long history here, unfortunately. There was a lot of contamination, there was a lot of litigation, there was a lot of discussion of, you know, what the future should be like for this area. Different options were considered. There ultimately was a settlement agreement. How good that settlement agreement was is a different story, but there is a settlement agreement, and it was signed. It's binding. It's not something that, at this point, we can go back and say, "We don't want to do it." It's hard to say it that way, but that, in my opinion, is the hard truth. And so the town, under that agreement, has a certain responsibility. That doesn't mean there are no options. There are options in terms of how efficiently you do this, how well you work together with others to minimize the costs, and that we should pursue additional funding sources to help reduce the cost to the town. That's basically the job that we now have.
I just needed to find out, you know, why that wasn't done, or why, you know, what the situation was with that, because I'm sure, like, a normal person would be asking that question. Whether it's popular question or not, it still has to be asked. The other thing, we're not going to, like, have the people vote for a bond to pay for this, or is it just...
That's certainly an option. I think it may have been mentioned in the earlier discussion that was had, and I believe at the time, generally speaking, there's not a whole lot of appetite for additional borrowing. That sort of became a general theme also in the budget process. It certainly is an option, and personally, I believe you always want to compare, you know, what is ultimately more cost-effective. If we could get, for example, a loan through the infrastructure bank, which can be a relatively low percentage, it ought to be compared to, you know, how else do we pay for it? There are options to pay for it. Certainly, you can ask, is it better and more cost-efficient to do it all at once? I'm not the expert on that. I think that practically speaking, you can't do it all at once, not in, like, 1 year. It takes longer. And so it can be spread out over several budget years, and it probably should, and that gives us more opportunity to keep going after other funding as well.
I think all the questions have to be covered, because if they're not, whether they're popular or not, all these things have to be asked, because then people are going, "Well, how come this, and how come that?" Well, just have them answered tonight, so that, I guess, whatever the town is responsible for, we can move forward. Thank you.
So one very specific action item is, make incremental progress on a problem, is to follow this recommendation to put the land use restriction on this town park. And I don't think we can vote on that tonight, because we just have a presentation on the agenda, but is there any objection to setting that for a formal vote at our next meeting? Is there any comment? Anybody have pushback on that recommendation? Okay, so let's go ahead. Well, actually, before I do that, let me make sure, are there any questions or comments from the public, both on specifically that town park and, of course, anything else on the presentation that you've heard tonight? Sure?
All I want to know is, people down there gave $500,000 to this town when this all was set. Now, I can't tell you exactly what was given to it, and we were never offered...
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
We were never offered at the time, I've been there for 75 years living down there. We were never offered anything to buy out the whole, all the property. We were told, we had to do it on our own and sue the various people that were cause of this. And one of the reasons was, there used to be, well, I won't mention his name, the gentleman that put this, that done this, used to be part of the town of Tiverton, and was also a representative of town of Tiverton. Now, I've been there for 75 years, and like I said before, we had no problem. Now, to say that, you know, nobody offered me $250,000 for my house, $300,000 for my house, we had to go out on our own to sue to get this stuff done and cleaned up. Nobody gave us a hand. It was only the people down at that end of town that took charge of this. Then all of a sudden, now we have to hook up, we were told we have to hook up. I spent over $8,000 to put a new sewer and septic system into my property. I know it's like maybe 18 years old now, maybe. But now, and we was told that we were going to be connected, too, when they did the work on Riverside Avenue and all this, that area of town. Then supposedly, it got to be too costly, so they took us out. Now, nobody told us nothing about, we had to get this done at a certain time. I'm on Foot Street. Now, I see my name's up there, I'm on the Butter, our 12th edition of Butters. Now, that whole Foot Street was dug up, and they put the pipes in. And there is 2 connectors there for the people on, well, some part of Bay and some on West of Foot. Nobody told me that I had to get it done by X amount of days, and that I was told that my sewer, my septic system was in conformity, because it's not 25 years old. Now, nobody down on that end has ever been told when it's got to be done. There was no deadline put to us at any meeting. And Mr. Hoffman was, he knows more about, I guess, the $500,000, or maybe he doesn't. What was given to this town, why it was given to this town?
Couple of things, I'm sorry, just, your name, sir, is Mr.?
Amaral, Callister Amaral.
So, Mr. Suster, can we get an answer on the $500,000 for the next meeting? Because I don't have the answer, unless you have it on the spot.
I think that's actually something that's been discussed.
Right.
Yeah, we might be able to ask that right now.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, a big portion of that was...
Explain how it was spent, can you explain where it came from?
Right, so out of the settlement agreement, there was $550,000 provided to the town for the town's oversight of the work done by the contractor, and then also along A Connell Street, when we were doing work on a couple of private properties there, we ran into mercury contamination, which ended up being along and under A Connell Street. The EPA issued an order to the town that that had to be cleaned up, the area of the green area, the right-of-way. So we cleaned, maybe off a little bit, about 185 on 1, 185 linear feet on one side, 235 linear feet on the other side, and dug that sort of out and replaced it. And then the rest of it is still, is this 300 and some thousand dollars left in the account to work on some of the other projects on behalf of the town. So that's where that was, and again, it was a pittance compared to what the overall estimate was. But again, as we talked about before, there was a litigation potential, because the town, like you said, hired Simpson, worked on the roads, worked on this, he was part of it, and it was just a mess, and it would have been litigated, we would have been in litigation for probably another 10 years from now. So that's unfortunate for everybody.
Can you also just explain, is that money limited in its use, the 350 that remains? Or could, and also, does that go towards the 2 or 3 million estimate that we just mentioned?
So specifically, we're supposed to try to use that on A Connell when we do some more portions of A Connell, and on the lower portion of Judson. It's not all we need for that, but that's what it's earmarked for. We don't want to, we can't use that on these connections along Bay, for instance, because, like I say, it's earmarked for those areas. And the DEM has given a lot of leeway, as, yours is one of the septic systems in that area that worked. But along here, the vast majority of these are tied into the catch basins, are tied into the brooks that run between the houses, and DEM knows that. When we broke the line that went into the brook, we put the line back. So the bottom line is, the DEM, it's nothing, most of those are all failing, and they end up going out to the bay. So, I mean, this is the worst area of the neighborhood, is along the Bay Street interceptor. The further west you go in the neighborhood, the worse off you are.
On this question, I might have this wrong, but I thought once you invested in a septic system, that you had a period of time where you were in safe harbor from the...
25.
That's true. 25 years.
25 years.
And then you can also file for 3, 3-year extensions on top of that.
That I didn't know about.
Yeah.
I didn't know about that. What I'm saying, at the time when I put this in, there was no such thing as where we had contamination and all, that's when I did. And I'm not the only one. But what I'm saying is, maybe the people think that people, the people down on North End, this area, made money out of this deal. Well, we didn't. We got, we got the financial jab. We didn't get what we hoped to have gotten. Some people didn't get their land cleaned up properly. We'd have to get LURs, you couldn't do this, you couldn't do that. Now, I'm not going back to when the lawyers made up, to hit town, that's what they made up. But now, the people down on that end, nobody made any money out of this deal at all.
And just to speak on following up with why the people in Bay Street were not enforced to connect, it was 100% tied to the soil contamination. In other parts of town, there's nothing that's prohibiting those property owners from connecting. In this part of town, this soil contamination in the right-of-way is standing in the way of their actually connecting, and that's not something that should be financially borne by them. So that is the only reason why these 14 and this area of Bay Street has not been enforced to connect, and DEM is aware of that.
So, did I understand you right, that if somebody has a working septic?
Yep.
They do not have, they're okay?
Yeah, last year, the district updated their mandatory connection policy with an exemption to protect homeowners who have done the right thing, invested in a great septic system, maintained it. If you have a great septic system within working order, it's documented, it's under 25 years old, and it stays with you, the property stays with you, you can file for 3, 3-year extensions to get some more life out of the septic system investment you've made, per DEM requirements. If that property changes hands and the system is over 25 years old, you do have to make upgrades within 1 year of your property transfer. But we actually did that to alleviate some of the financial burden for anyone who's got a working septic system.
One question, and maybe there's already an answer, but since there's a lot of, I mean, the town has an interest, the residents have an interest, there's a separate, there's a separate legal entity, the wastewater or the district. Do we have one, can there be one sort of single point of contact that, at least going forward, you know where to get the answers? Can that be you?
Call the wastewater district. We're happy to help you.
And if it sounds like it's a town proper issue rather than you'll call John?
Yep.
Okay, so, does everybody know how to reach the wastewater district?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you'll be the czar of, all right.
I do have a question. Out of these 14 residents, how many have active septic that are less than 25 years old?
He may have the only one.
I don't know.
No, 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 I'm curious.
Most of them are failing and are well over 25 years old, if not assessable.
I don't know.
My guess, having worked in the neighborhood, might be possibly 1 or 2 others besides...
Oh, we know, okay. So maybe 3.
Yeah.
I don't mind if I have to hook up, but I don't want...
Well, it doesn't sound like you do, as long as it's working.
No, no, I mean, what got my attention, when I seen paying $500 a day, fine, for something that I was never told, you have to get it done by X day or month, you know what I mean? I mean, I don't want to do it, but I know eventually, if I want to sell my house, I'm going to have to get it done.
Right, but right now...
I'm safe right now.
You have 7 years left on your septic, plus you can get 3 extensions.
Right.
So $500 a day sounds like a lot. Is that, is that you or us that's doing that?
That's part of the rules and regulations of the district. It's been that way since the inception of the district, that we have the ability to charge up to $500 for a violation, and each violation, each day could be a separate violation.
So one person could be 100, another could be, there's no...
Well, we haven't, that's part of it, it's never been enforced. The mandatory connection policy has never been enforced. The reason that we're enforcing that now is directly related to the USDA sewer expansion project. In order to qualify for funding and show that it's a financially viable loan, we have to show that we have a guaranteed number of connections to support that loan. And in order to do that, if sewer is available, if you have a failing system, if it's under 20, if it's over 25 years old, we have to force the connection.
Sounds a little steep to me, but I guess that's for another day. Yes, ma'am? Is that on the last question?
Well, it's on Vicky Neville, Cananica Street. When you're going to, like, I'm going to have to do it. So, the connecting, you said, you're going to have a contractor that's going to do it for us?
We have a whole list of contractors, and we have a plan of bringing them into the district and having them have a workshop with Mr. Hoffman on how to properly dispose of the contaminated soil, just so that they don't think that that should be a reason for them to mark up any prices. It's nothing that is extravagant that they have to do, it's just a matter of which landfill do you take it to, what are their tipping fees?
Well, if you're, like, I'm in the contaminated zone, but my property was not deemed contaminated. But the ledge area and stuff, my septic system is in the back, and you're coming right through the front. You will make sure that gets done?
Yep.
And that will all be part of the loan?
So what we will offer is the public sewer, and the homeowners will have to make their private connections. And so the sewer tie-in loan fund is available for you to do that.
For that, okay. And the other question I had was, I've been to at least, I don't know, 40 meetings of Bay Street, and we were informed in the very beginning, the town was going to get $500, half a million dollars just to uncontaminate the roads, not, this has nothing to do with the sewer system. This was going on 10 years now? Maybe 12, I don't know. Yeah. So, I mean, I think a lot of this problem is those on Foot Street, if they're going into basins and stuff, that has nothing to do with contamination. You can't just wipe out a neighborhood. I've lived there 43 years. You think I want to just see my whole neighborhood gone? I won't be gone, because I'm not contaminated.
I think...
We didn't have that choice, either.
No, no, Vicky, I was just asking, because people in town might ask the question.
Yeah, but...
And I understand it's your home, but it had to be asked, Vicky.
No, I... No, I, we're not Love Canal, I mean, this is not.
Well, it kind of is.
You know, we're not gonna just wipe out a neighborhood.
No. It, it did have to be, you have to ask it. It's not that it's gonna happen, and that's all.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
I understand you asking it, but you gotta understand-
Not for myself, but like-
That's an old neighborhood.
People that are gonna have that question, it needed to be asked for.
Right. And, and I, and a lot of people in the neighborhood are putting in new septic systems. I see a whole bunch of them doing it. I'm not gonna be doing that. I'm gonna have to go with this option. Thank you for your, for your input.
A lot of the reasons why people, um, are, it's a better option for them to go with se- or sewer than septic is specifically because of the land that's required to put in a septic system for a leaching field. In that part of town, it's just too dense, and it would require an alternative type of septic, which is incredibly expensive to install as well as to maintain. And so when you have the option of a sewer that's going to improve the value of the land versus an expensive alternative septic system, it is actually in your best interest financially to invest in the sewer connection, just based on the density of the, the neighborhood.
One of the things that, that I learned from Mr. Kendrick is that even a brand-new septic system actually doesn't last forever either. I was, I was, I was disappointed to hear that. I guess it's 30 to 50 years, is that kind of the thinking?
Well, the problem is, well, the problem is with the alternative systems, like she says, there's one or two pumps, usually two pumps, you gotta have them cleaned-
Regularly.
Like regularly, the screens on them, you got the electrical cost, and then the leach field itself still doesn't last forever, so.
Yeah.
They're not a great option.
If you don't keep up with the cleaning, then you're gonna ruin the leach field, and that's the, the biggest risk is that-
With a septic system, it's a tank in your yard, and there's a limit to its capacity. So if you're not pumping it out, if you, if you've been in your home for 20 some odd years and you're one who's like, "I've never pumped my system," please go do that right now, because when you flush, it's going to be better.
Most of them get pumped at least every two years.
Yeah.
I, I see people doing it, so we, we understand that. We're not forced.
Yeah.
Yes, that is, yeah.
Well, first I'd recommend that, rather than pumping up themselves, they hire somebody to do it.
Of course, yes.
Um, I just, I might be misremembering, but I feel like last time we talked about this, the estimate for the whole thing was more like 8 to 10 million.
Right, well, that's if you do all the roadways. So if you take the pavement off, strip all the contamination out, go in the green areas, it's around 10 million, 10 and a half for their votes is our best estimate. But that's doing the entire roadway. And the, uh, the better plan would be, like we talked about on Cananica, is once we figure out what the water department wants to do, what they need, 'cause there are drainage issues on all those roads, once you figure out that, if things are so concentrated, you're gonna end up making a trench, a trench like this, then you're better off just box cutting and getting rid of that contamination and not having to deal with it in that area, a portion of the road again. So in each area, we look at that, depending on what the contamination is and how deep it is.
So the 2 to 3 cover, million would cover-
The, the trenching of the roadway and then all the laterals off of it, best we can calculate.
And so the only remaining liability for the, the rest of the 7 million would be if new pipes had to go in different places or something happened that required work-
Right, and then, you know, you obviously have to maintain the pavement, but I'll tell you, that's one thing about the DPW down in that area, they've all, always added pavement, they've never taken in much up. I mean, we did some coys, we had 12, 13 inches of pavement on some roads.
Any other questions or comments from the, from the public?
So if I'm doing the math correctly, for the dozen on Bay Street, it's about 8,300 a household?
Yeah, that's a good estimate.
For, for the town's portion of the right of way? And I, I think we talked about this before, but, you know, there is, I mean, it might take a concerted effort between the town and the wastewater district, but given that we're talking about dealing with failed septic systems, um, and that we know that we've got a septic leachip problem, you know, it seems to me that this is a place that potentially EPA 819 money would be a, a really good option to go for, and, you know, it's not unheard of for the EPA to, to provide significant amounts of money in a situation like this, but we need to, we need to start that process. I mean, we need to sit down with the wastewater district and the town and, you know, potentially reach out to our federal delegation.
Congressional delegation, yeah.
But it's gonna take a while, so it's something we'd have to make a concerted effort to do now, but, you know, potentially, you know, the EPA sometimes gives out awards in the 1 to 2 million dollar range for exactly this kind of stuff. So I, I might suggest, and I see you're nodding, right, that-
Well, we've talked about this before.
We, we've talked about this, but you actually have to, like, at some point-
We discussed it in our meeting as well, in particular, the need to, you know, keep talking to congressional delegations. Certainly, we've had the discussions, most recently with, uh, Cicilline when he was visiting here. Uh, I've talked about it with Chris Albo, the Senator Reed's office as well, but, um, I, I hesitate to go to them until we have a little bit more of, you know, this is what we think the next phase is, and then say, and now we really need help, you know, getting the additional money. But the conversation has started. We started last year with, with these folks. But EPA is definitely one potential source.
And what we really need to do, um, to do this right, is to work as a unit with the water department and with, uh, and with DPW before we approach EPA, because if we have that, it's one and done, that makes it much more sellable as, as an idea.
So is that process started, or are we just waiting to-
Yes, no, that's, um, we, we have meetings to get together, we have a meeting, um, in February to identify, um, continued projects with DPW, and, and that gives us time right now in the fall to work with the water department as well. So we definitely have, um, those balls rolling.
So by February, you-
We should have another update.
Okay.
Yeah. Because at that point, we would have, um, plans that have overlapped with all departments.
Now meanwhile, the people who got the letter, what do you suggest for that?
Um, the people in Bay Street actually should not have received a letter. They're probably responding mostly to the news article, um, because, again, it's not fair to, to say, "Hey, you have to connect, and, oh, there's this obstacle standing in your way." So the people in, in the Bay Street neighborhood are not part of the, the 45 a butters in the rest of town.
So who got the letter?
Um, there's 45 a butters, most of them were actually a part of the original Phase 1 project, and they were cut from that project specifically because we had to, to keep the costs low and the bids came in over. And so as a result, um, we had to make some decisions on who was the most likely to be cut. The residents who have existing sewer in front of their homes, that made the most sense because we're not creating sewer there. Literally, all that they have to do is make their private connections. And so we focused on other areas of town where the greater need results in us actually putting sewer in the ground.
But to those people that received the letters, there's help with the loans?
Absolutely. Um, we actually have a hardship policy, um, that you can, uh, apply for, and we have the sewer tie-in loan fund, um, and we also have, um, unique fi- uh, payment options when it comes to the, uh, the connection fee of 2,700. You can choose to tie that into your loan fund, or you can choose to split that up over quarterly payments to our district.
I'm just asking a question, I'm not criticizing.
Oh, yeah.
Was this in the letter that, that was help?
We did not want, we actually included the sewer tie-in loan documentation with the letter, um, but we didn't want to get too far into the details because we really do want people to come, uh, to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, there've been a lot of changes at the district, and, uh, you brought up a great point, Ms. Hilton, that, um, a lot of times people will talk about things, but not a lot's been done. What I'd like to say on behalf of the district is that there've been different phases of the district, the, and there've been different general managers and executive directors at the district, and they have served in unique capacities to support the district in its creation, in its, uh, initial phase of starting the USDA funding project, um, with the second executive director, general manager, and then the, the most recent third one, Matt, he continued the USDA project when it, uh, had to be reassembled and put back together. Um, and then now, this is just the right time for the district to continue moving this forward. We have the momentum, and so we're continuing this project. Uh, so there has been a lot of talk, and those are all good intentions, and we are seeking to follow through on those intentions.
Okay, so for a game plan, we're gonna set the playground, or the park, I should say, park?
Careful.
Yeah. Playground's a different question.
Yeah.
Um, for public, requesting public input, we'll take a vote on that, whatever the first meeting in October is, 13th or something like that, 14th?
17th.
17th, okay.
Or 15th, sorry.
So again, we do want to hear, uh, definitely want to hear any input that you have on whether a green light going forward with the playground. Park, the park. There should be a playground on the park.
There used to be, yeah.
I was gonna say, I, I've been there many times, I see like monkey bars or something.
Yep.
Okay, now I feel a bit-
Yep.
Uh, the administrator's gonna at least put in his initial budget request, the $100,000 placeholder. We are working on a long-term financial plan, this is definitely gonna be on the list. We have a workshop just for that topic next week, so I don't know for sure what the schedule is, but I'm gonna be suggesting that we have, uh, shoot for an interim draft, working draft by February 1st.
Yes.
So that sounds, you know, like a great time to, if you, if you're willing to-
Time's perfect.
To, to come together with, like, a Plan A and a Plan B action plan on, you know, going to EPA and whatever else that we can do, uh, and how we're gonna actually fix this thing, 'cause I think we have to fix this problem.
I would like to suggest, uh, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns is offering a workshop in November on, um, grants for municipalities. Um, I'll be attending that workshop, it's, I think, on the 3rd Thursday from 1 to 3. So that would be a, a wonderful thing for this town to be represented at.
Could you send the information to Nancy and she can get it to us?
Absolutely.
And on writing grants, is that something that you or your team can do, or is it-
Um, we can help with that, um, but i- if it's a, if it's a concerted effort, that would be the best.
And then the last thing, there was, there was a short-term action, things like supporting, facilitating coordination, are there any more specifics you're looking for there on, on, uh, or are we, or we, have we covered the waterfront, so to speak, what we can do today?
Well, I think I indicate, I'm, I'm optimistic based on the meeting that we had, um, you know, that we have the right people at the table to serve as a core to, to move this forward, and we also know that, you know, the three of us are not gonna be enough. You know, we still, within our own organizations, we need more help, uh, but we also need to connect with the other utilities and, you know, and then we need to do a lot of public process at, at some point as well, so. I think we're ready, and I'm, I'm actually very glad to hear the executive director talk the way she just did.
So, but we're all on board with the February 1st target, so if you don't have enough resources, you'll ask us to help?
Yes.
Because we can get a committee going, or we can all roll sleeves. Okay. Okay, so it's not like a plan? Any other questions? Good? Okay, so we're gonna, it looks like we're heading towards, uh, opening up the park with the playground on it, with the restriction. We want to hear from you in October. Uh, we're gonna hold 100,000 in the town administrator's request, and we're gonna definitely include this in our long-term financial plan with a February 1st target for an interim, interim Plan A and Plan B. Okay? Great, thank you so much for all your, all your help.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our open public forum. Uh, we have, Ms. Susan Gill has, uh, signed up on about the administrative officer position. Gill?
Susan Gill, planning board. Uh, I wanted to get back to you, I was here in August when we had our discussion about, um, the administrative officer position. So I know at that time, it was newly proposed that I remained on the planning board as well as, um, taking, being financially compensated as the administrative officer. At that time, I asked for a couple of days to think about it, and, um, once I left, a couple of questions came up, um, I think I emailed that back to you guys, but, um, one of the questions was if, um, there was anything I needed to do as far as with the Ethics Advisory Commission. Um, I did, uh, send in a formal request for review. Um, the other question that arose was, uh, what my liability protection would be, and that was a question with the inter-local trust if I'd be covered, um, because at that time, we were discussing, or you were discussing, you stepping into position as an independent contractor. So I did finally, I submitted a formal, um, request to the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. Um, I received a response finally this last week. It's not gonna go before the full advisory board because she's, um, the staff attorney that I spoke to said basically that it's a hypothetical situation and they don't put things before the board, excuse me, that are hypothetical. So I know Rhode Island General Law allows for a chairman or a member of the planning board to serve as administrative officer, but the question, uh, well, the difficulty is once they assumed pay, um, to be paid in that position. So the way she explained it to me was that that would be the revolving door exception, um, that I would have to step off the pla- that somebody can't be on the planning board, you'd have to be off of it for a year before you could take a paid position, uh, on behalf of the town, so, um, and also then, once that happened, it'd have to be a full advertised position, I couldn't just step into that role and an advertised position, be paid, and also serve at the same time. Um, and then the other one was for the inter-local trust, um, town administrator followed up on that for me, and the inter-local trust would not cover me for liability as an independent contractor. Um, it was suggested that I get my own insurance or my own liability protection. Um, since I'm not an LLC or a PC, that would put my personal assets at risk, which, um, I wasn't really willing to do that, to consider that. So, um, at this point, um, I think recently, there's been some interviews for the town planner administrative officer position and some qualified candidates. Um, I think based on these two things, uh, you know, for me, it's a moot point, but I wanted to bring this forward because I think if this situation ever arose in the future, that the council and, um, the planning board should be aware of it, that, that basically based on these two things that I am aware of, it just is not a workable situation, so. I want to thank you for consideration and your, um, confidence in me, but I don't think it's gonna happen, so, thanks.
I guess we could theoretically price in the insurance to the independent contractor so we could solve that problem. I don't know how to solve revolving door problem, I have to look for-
If I may, because I think that should have been mentioned, and it was certainly mentioned to Sue, that, you know, if the independent contractor situation doesn't work, uh, then there is the possibility of figuring out how much it would cost her to get the additional, right, or on whatever insurance she has, and then decide whether the town can cover that. That was certainly on the table. I can't tell you how strange it is to hear these things at a town council meeting. Um, I reach out, I speak with people, and I think that should have been done in this case. Um, it is fair to say that, you know, we, um, have a difficult proposition if it's true that, you know, uh, if she, she can't be on the planning board and, and have a paid position, so, you know, hopefully, we will get the new, new planner, but.
And I, and I only add, just, you, you really should, um, Ms. Gill's comment about the, the personal liability, right? She's not an LLC. I would price in a couple thousand dollars worth of corporate formation and maintenance, uh, you know, uh, to, to, to add that level of protection, because even if you have a million-dollar insurance policy, umbrella policy, 5 billion dollars, whatever it is, um, you know, in the end, your, your personal liability is on the line, and you can solve that with a, with a small, you know, budget adjustment as well. Um, so, but both of those things together, if it ever came up, I think would, would be the solution.
Did you see the, well, the LLC could still be penetrated if it's uninsured, though, theoretically, right? Other factors?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, but that's, that's a, you know, a much harder wall to climb, I guess.
Is the revolving door, is that a showstopper, or do we have a workaround?
I, I, it's the first I've heard of it. I think it's a fascinating take on it, um, I don't, I don't doubt the ethics commission is correct, um, but, uh, I, I don't have any workaround that I can think of at this point.
I think it has to do with, if the planning board appoints the administrative officer, it's, if, it's the revolving door. No.
Well, let's, I, I appreciate Sue bringing this up for, in case it comes up again, so it's at the top of the list, but maybe we could look into that, just in case it does come up in another context, 'cause, uh, a lot of these, when you look at it closely, there might be, there might be a way around it. Okay, so this might work itself out through the hiring process, and if it doesn't, then maybe we can look at this again as needed, is that, is that good? Okay, Ms. Martin, board reappointment.
Yes, Barbara Martin, Neck Road. At September 9th town council meeting, I had planned to speak on behalf of Lise Gashite's excellent qualifications, her long-term experience on the zoning board, and her institutional knowledge of Tiverton's zoning ordinances, town charter, and land uses. But since Ms. Gashite's did such a worthy job of explaining her excellent credentials during her interview, I will focus on something else. I have read the town council's policy on boards, commissions, and committees, January 2012, which says, "Board members will generally be limited to three consecutive terms of service on a particular board if other qualified applicants are available." Though this limitation may not apply in cases where the town council balances the need to staff boards so that various levels of experience are distributed to ensure long-term continuity of board knowledge, to encourage citizen participation in government, and where a member's skills and experience or background exceed the usual and customary requirements applicable for service on the particular board. It is clear that Ms. Gashite's skills, experience, background exceed the usual and customary requirements. She has the ability to guide and formulate decisions which withstand appeals to the Superior Court. As a 10-year member of the zoning board, she can ensure the long-term continuity of board knowledge. I would hope that the town council recognizes that not to appoint Ms. Gashite to the zoning board would be against Tiverton's best interests. We need the most competent and qualified people to serve on our boards, commissions, and committees. If the town council ignores its own policies and appoints an applicant with less background, skills, experience, and board knowledge than Ms. Gashite, it will be a dereliction of your duty.
Thank you.
I'm happy to, thank you for reading the policy, I appreciate that, and I was trying to explain the policy last time as well, but I'm also very happy to let you know that Mr. Bishop was kind enough to reach out to me, and although he had preferred a regular seat, wanted to, just sort of in the interest of it working out for everybody, he's happy to take the alternate, so I think you're going to find that everything's going to work out just fine, and I want to appreciate everybody for their efforts on that, but we are going to take votes on that shortly. So, that is it for the open public forum, we had two people sign up tonight, we have no advertised public hearings, but we, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss the, oh no, here we go, Board of Licensing, our friends in the Recreation Commission, approval of a special event permit for trunk-or-treat, that's on Saturday, October 26th, with a rain date of October 27th, location to be determined, anybody here from Recreation Commission?
No, yes.
Go on up, tell us all about it.
Well, you guys are all well.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
So we did just reconsider this evening.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, Chris Romline. So we did just reconsider the location tonight, and pending school approval, we're going to move to the Tiverton Middle School, little safer place, because we have.
It's bigger.
Lot of traffic issues. See, it should be a pretty nice event.
Keep going. No, it's, this is the big chance to get the turnout, so.
To get the turnout, yeah.
What, what time does it, is it right here in front of you?
So it's going to be six, six to eight.
Okay, six to eight.
Six to eight, yeah, so we have a, we have a setup.
Is there a typo, Joe?
Yes, there's a typo on the form, Mr. President, says six to seven, but it's supposed to be six to eight.
Six to eight o'clock, okay, and we're looking at the middle school.
And parking would be better there, you think, well?
We figure we can get probably about 150 to 175 cars there.
In that area?
Yeah, we did a little check the other night when they had the parent-teacher conferences, did a little head count, and there was close to 200 cars there, going down the street.
Yeah, I can see that.
But it's contained.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have people walking on vulgar marsh, which is a little dangerous, and then that area where the entrance is, is kind of nice, so I think we can decorate it, actually, probably be a nicer event space.
Sometimes they're parked all the way at the bank and everything.
Yep, yep, don't want anybody getting hurt, it's supposed to be a fun night.
Are you doing the dancing and the dance performance, or?
Uh, I might do a little DJing, you never know.
There we go. Okay, this is an open public hearing, anybody have any questions or comments on the annual trunk-or-treat event, October 26th, just before 6:00, Tiverton Middle School? May I have a motion approved?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, real quick.
Chris, do you have the approval from the school department by now?
Not yet, well, hopefully tomorrow, we just, we just went over and got the, we had a special meeting to unvote going to the library and vote going to the middle school, pending school approval tomorrow.
Okay, unanimous.
Fingers are crossed.
I believe, Sally, you have a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes. So. But isn't it on your agenda? It's too late to be on the agenda, yeah.
Yes, request.
So, just to be on the safe side then, so should we make a motion that approves this location and the alternative location, just so that it's covered in case something, in case there happens to be a school event that night or something?
I think we already had approval for the high school, correct, Chris?
Correct.
So, the school already approved the high school, but they wanted to go back to the library because of location, we felt it wasn't as safe, the library, so that's why we wanted to try to go to the middle school, so I think we could always kick over to the high school if we had to.
High school's the backup plan, that's right.
Right.
Also, the high school's the backup plan, not the library.
I would say, I would say probably, you know, as a backup, say, the high school would be a backup to the middle school, correct?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve special event permit for the trunk-or-treat on Saturday, October 26th, 2019, with the rain date of October 27th, 2019, location to be either the high school or the middle school.
Second.
Does that sound good?
Thank you. So everyone's going to show up, got your costumes?
Wait, wait a minute, we have to vote.
We have a second, we have a live motion, any questions or comments? Last public, any objection to proceeding to a vote? Hearing none, all is in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
I already have a costume.
Bring your candy, bring all the candy you can.
It's pretty cool.
Appointments and resignations. We have four boards tonight, we have the Arts Commission and the Planning Board, Mr. Peter Bramanti has applied to both. Now, on the Arts Commission, that's a five-member board.
Oh, Peter.
With three two-year terms, two one-year terms with three vacancies, and we have one applicant, and then also on the Planning Board, we're down to one vacancy, we also have an applicant for that, so, let's just do a doubleheader, and thank you for bravely applying for, for anything.
Peter, Mr., Mr. and Mrs. Pelletier will be so glad that somebody's going to join them, too.
I had coffee with her about a week and a half ago, and we had a, a nice chat, so.
So, very informal, tell us about yourself, what you're, you know, what you're interested in, and we'll, we'll throw it open.
Sure, I'm relatively new, as a four-and-a-half-year resident here in Tiverton, was in Providence for many years before that. My background is particularly in the arts and cultural realm, but I've had a fair amount of involvement in civic affairs in my previous neighborhood in Providence, in terms of the planning board work. My professional work is as an arts administrator and a fundraiser, so I'm very familiar with writing grants and shaking trees to get money for various projects, and I see a lot of opportunity and potential for, for my role in both of the boards. I think, you know, there's a fantastic arts community here already, I think that it's one of our great assets that we could look to further capitalize on, and I think in terms of my work previously, both with the Providence Preservation Society and the West Broadway Neighborhood's Community Development Corporation, I spent a lot of time on, on our overlay zone in our district in the West Broadway Neighborhood, and was responsible for some transportation enhancement grants, looking at streetscape, infill construction, we were really, much like the Tiverton Comprehensive Plan, looking at, you know, local, small-scale, authentic pedestrian nature design, and so I, I was thrilled to read your Comprehensive Plan and look at the vision that's there, and I sat in on a planning board meeting last week, or the 10th, I think it was, and so I'm up for the challenge and look forward to, to working with everyone. I, I live at 3804 Main Road.
Okay, any questions for, or was I have to come up with some?
Well, I, I was just going to say that Mr. Bramanti is very prepared, because he's already answered my two stock questions of, have you been to a planning board meeting, and have you read the Comprehensive Plan, so, thank you, you know, I appreciate the fact that you've, you've taken the time to do that, that, before you apply. The only question I'd ask about the planning board, you know, obviously, and if you have experience with this, you know, to be a really good contributing board member, it's more work than most of the other boards and commissions, and, you know, being prepared and reading plans and, and getting yourself up to speed on things like stormwater and all that, do you have the time and to be able to, to do all that?
Yes, I'm sort of part-time employed right now, so I have more free time on my hands than I know what to do with, and looking to sort of.
Don't, don't say that out loud, don't, don't, don't say that out loud around here.
I can't promise it will stay that way, but, no, no, I, I saw at the planning board the, the level of, of work required, so I'm eager to do a lot of reading and get caught up, it will take me, I think, a while for certain things, like the solar ordinance and such, but.
Thank you.
Rob? Yeah, I, I joined briefly with Barbara Pelletier and Peter until I had got called away with a grandson's broken arm, but it was a very exciting time talking about the arts and a lot of his ideas, it was very exciting, of ways to bring art sort of front and center, you know, even on signs we use around town, I mean, he just had a lot of really good ideas, so I think he'll be a great asset. Thanks.
I like the MFA, and I, I, once upon a time, I worked at Brown, so I did a lot of work with Trinity, right? Wonderful. Any other questions?
So. Well, I just want, my sort of stock question for planning zoning-type boards is, what's, what sort of philosophy or approach do you bring, would you bring to balancing the various interests in, you know, maintaining character of the town versus property rights and all those, when those come into play, what's your angle on that?
Well, it requires a good deal of, of listening and respect, and really think trying to find, and this is true of working with funders, on what can be, you know, difficult conversations, finding what are the touchpoints that people really care about, and cutting through sort of the noise to get to the heart of the matter, and so, you know, everybody wants a good environment, everybody wants a vibrant town, everybody wants improved services, and I think to keep the quality of life here, so I think that those are, you know, you kind of work to find what's at the heart of an argument that people respond to, and try and find consensus around that, and then build out from there, so that's been a guiding principle.
Okay, so we have a policy, and our policy says, if you don't have more applicants than vacancies, we can proceed immediately to an appointment, which I would support, but does anybody want more time for consideration, or do we proceed right to appointments?
We'll, we'll need a motion, right, to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, sure.
To waive, to waive the policy.
Yeah, make a motion to waive the policy.
Second.
Do we need to do anything else? No, okay.
Do the appointments.
I'll do, I would like to.
Should we vote on?
Make a motion that we.
Excuse me, was, was there a vote there, or was that just my accusation?
No, we just, we have to vote.
I never quite, was sure we always have to vote, do we have a policy?
I'm not sure you have to, I just want Nancy to know how to report it, that's all.
Usually that's.
It sounds like a combined motion.
Without objection, is, is that? That's fine, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
I claim the policy waived, I think is, all right.
All right, I make a motion for, I'm going to do both for the Arts Commission and the Planning Board, that Mr. Peter M. Bramanti fill the positions on both of these, one's a planning board, and one is the Art Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a live motion, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, any objection to proceeding to a vote?
So that would, just for the record, that would be Arts Commission to expire April 15, 2021, and Planning Board to expire July 15, 2022?
Yep.
Sounds good. All is in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, Economic Development Commission.
Do we vote?
Elizabeth Carr, this is a five-member board with four-year, four-year terms, one of our longer terms, with one vacancy, and we have, we have swag here. Thank you. Thank you for applying, and as you just saw, very informal, tell us about yourself, what you're interested in the board, we'll have a couple of questions.
She did this.
So, my name is Elizabeth Carr, I live at 204 Riverside Drive in Tiverton, I've been there for about seven years, my family's been in Tiverton on Broadview Drive since 1978, I'm a current member of the Economic Development Commission, so requesting reappointment. I'm actually professionally, I'm a Vice President of Risk and Compliance at Citizens Bank, and I also own a small business here in town, a home-based business, and I've enjoyed working on the EDC so far, one of the things that I think we've made a good start, but we haven't gone far enough in my opinion, is I would love to really focus on implementing something called Lean Rhode Island, which makes it easier for businesses to come in and, and start in Tiverton. Is there anything else that you'd like to hear, or is that enough?
You picked my question, which was, since you're already on the board, you know, kind of priorities, or is there anything we can do to support that initiative, I know your budget is very tight.
Yes, it is.
So, we have a day here, too, so.
Elizabeth, what I understand is you're very responsible for doing this, is that correct? You did a lot of.
I did a lot of that, and I also helped out quite a bit with the Comprehensive Plan a while back as well, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
The goal here, I don't deserve the credit, but since I'm facing the camera, Tiverton Works, user's guide for doing business in Tiverton, and doing what we can to try to make streamlined and consistent information out there for those navigating all the regulations and.
I will let, I will let you know that this is now in Town Hall, both at the Town Clerk's Office and in the Flyers, it's also in the library, and we had been working with Catherine Damiani in terms of a program that she's doing now, so there'll be, there are some, she's doing a program on using Google and businesses using different things, so these are there, and she and I are working on getting a list of people together, because that's one of the things that the town does not have, is an email list of all the businesses in town, believe it or not, so.
I think we should put this on our website, too.
We can put it on our website, it'll be on our website, and that would be delightful, yes, so it's done.
So. Mr. President.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
With appreciation for all of Elizabeth's excellent work, I'd like to nominate her for reappointment to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 7/15/2023.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, any objection to proceeding to a vote? Hearing none, all is in favor? Anamis, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
All right, so on the zoning board of review, again, as I had a little opportunity to preview, Mr. Bishop was kind enough to line this up so that everybody can, will help us from a very rare circumstance where we had more applicants, so I think we're positioned to proceed right to a vote.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lise Gashite to reappointment to expire in July 15, 2024, as well as Joel Bishop, a new appointment, a second alternate to expire 7/15/2020, as well as Jennifer Hilton for reappointment as the first alternate to expire 7/15/2020.
Could we do, could we do these separate, please, because some of us might agree with some and not others, so could we vote?
and it's gonna look like we don't agree with any of them if we do it this way. And I think that we have, we should have the opportunity to vote individual, because they're individual appointments. And the terms are different, too.
As you can see, my attempt to streamline this process is going swimmingly well.
Well, no, I just, this shouldn't take long. I'm just doing it at a time.
Do you mind taking him seriatum, Justin, or do you wanna stick to this and force a motion to divide?
I think, in keeping with the library board vote, I think a package deal of all of them is...
We didn't do that with the library as a package deal. No, I think that these are different positions with different terms, and we should vote them individually.
Yeah, we voted the library together. The only other time that we had more applicants, which we actually don't have that problem now, is with the library.
I don't think it would be a problem if we did it individually, and it'll just take two more seconds. This isn't a controversy.
All right. So, I try. All right. So, we have a live motion on the floor, and it doesn't sound like he's willing to rephrase it. So your option is to ask for a motion to divide?
Yes.
We have a motion or an amendment. What's your pleasure?
I would like an amendment to divide the three positions because they have different expiration dates, and they're also different positions. There's one vacancy and two alternates. So I think we should have the choice to vote for each individual.
I'm gonna treat it as a motion to divide. Is that appropriate? Okay. All right. And I don't know if that needs a second, but let's just see if there's a second to the motion to divide.
It's okay.
All right. I have a motion to divide.
Can we have...
I don't know if it's debatable. I'm happy to take discussion on it.
Are we? So, there's, so we can't have discussion on the motion to divide?
No.
Procedural?
That's what you...
Okay. Let's try to keep things moving along. All right. All those in favor of the motion to divide? Any opposed? All right. Question will be divided. The first motion will be heard is on the appointment of Ms. Lee Skashite. This is a reappointment to expire July 15, 2024. That is now a divided live motion. Did I have that correct?
Then you need a second for that, right?
I had a second from Nancy.
Okay.
Okay?
So this is just for Lucy?
We have a divided live motion just for the zoning board? Okay. Is there any objection to proceeding to a vote? Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? All those in favor? All right. That's unanimous. We now have a divided live motion for Mr. Joel Bishop requesting a new appointment, and I guess this would be to... So, there are not two alternates. There is a first alternate.
And a second.
Did I have that right? Okay. This is for the second alternate. Okay? All right. That is a live motion. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? All those in favor? All right. That's unanimous. We now have a divided live motion for Mr. Joel Bishop requesting a new appointment, and I guess this would be to... So, there are not two alternates. There is a first alternate.
And a second.
Did I have that right? Okay. This is for the second alternate. Okay? All right. That is a live motion. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Five to two. Is that right? Okay.
Who's opposed? I'm sorry.
We have Councilors Hilton and Dimodera opposed. Five to two. And finally, we have a divided live motion on the reappointment for Ms. Jennifer Hilton. This is for the first alternate seat to expire on July 15. That's a divided live motion. Are there any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Any objection to proceeding to a vote? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. I want to, again, thank all of the applicants for all of this and allowing us to call our policy properly. Thank you very much. We now move on to the topic, one of my very favorites, of bituminous concrete crushing. I love it. I'm still not quite sure what bituminous means. I sort of looked it up by now, but we are getting ready to award some bids. One would be, because I want to say it again, for a bituminous concrete crusher rental. This would be awarded to the sole bidder of A.J. Potter &amp; Sons, Inc. of Westport. That's $6.20 per ton for an estimated quantity of 2,500 tons for a total bid price of $15,000. It's $15,000 of bituminous concrete crushing. Can we take these all together, or do we want to take them? Why don't we take them one by one, just so everybody's okay? I think you previewed this maybe last, the last meeting. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Director, to the bituminous concrete crushing rental?
No, it's, I'm happy with A.J. Potter Jr. &amp; Sons being the bidder and awarding the contract to them.
We have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the awarding for a bituminous concrete crusher rental to the sole bidder, A.J. Potter &amp; Sons of Westport, Massachusetts, for a total bid price of $15,000.
Second.
We have a live motion. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we have the Uniform Rental Service to be awarded, or we're considering awarding to the low bidder, Synthus, is that how you say that? Synthus Corporation from Cumberland. Specifications are attached, I hope, in the packet somewhere. Anything to add?
Nope.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the Uniform Rental Service to Synthus Corporation, 300 Highland Corporate, Ave, Cumberland, Rhode Island, per the attached specifications.
And a second?
Yeah, but it says here, uniform rental.
Do you have a question?
Okay. Well, I need a second to the motion, just to keep things moving along here. All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have any verification on this? Trish? Trish, have a second? Are we...
I just had a, well, I had a question on the way it was worded on the subject of agenda. It says, "Concrete Crusher Rental, Specifications and Uniform Rental Service." That's, that was the only question I had.
What was it?
Did you see that?
Where are you, Joe? I'm not, okay, I see it.
This one was for the crusher, and this one also says crusher.
Oh.
It was confusing, and it says rental, uniform rental, so I was just...
So the agenda's separate, but the backups combined. That's what's a little confusing for...
That's all it is.
I understand.
So nine, the backup, Councilor Perry has eagle eyes. Nine, A1 and two are combined backups.
It's a different company, that's all. I was just a question.
Okay.
Oh.
It's a different company. It says, "Bituminous Crusher."
So, so A3 should say rental uniforms?
It should just say, yeah, rental, uniform rental.
Right.
It shouldn't say the awarding of bituminous concrete crusher.
I see what he's saying. But it's only wrong, it's wrong on the agenda request, but the agenda and the backup is correct.
Correct.
Right.
The agenda's correct. The agenda's correct, so I don't think you have a notice issue with voting this, just for clarification of the record.
So if somebody comes and says, oh, that was...
Yeah, the item labeled nine dash eight dash one and two just has, in line number three, I believe, an error, but the agenda is properly reflected.
That's all I wanted to bring up.
We strive for squeaky clean on the agenda. Is it, we're okay? You're okay? All right. Any questions or comments on awarding the Uniform Rental Service contract to low bidders Synthus out of Cumberland?
No.
Any objection to proceeding to a vote?
I do have a question, actually. Rick, this is, this is the discussion we've had when we've been in the negotiations, talking about how to, it's the same thing we're talking about. And just out of curiosity, if, under this agreement, if we were to say, try to expand uniform rentals to a different bargaining unit, would this be expandable to that? I'm just curious. Or...
I don't know legally, but certainly they'd be willing to do so.
Take more work. I was just curious. All right. Thank you.
Last call. Okay. All those in favor? All right. That's six-oh unanimous. I'm very happy to tell you that we are now going to take another vote on bituminous concrete. This time, instead of crushing it, we're gonna pave it. Crushing's probably a little more fun, but this is for the low bidder, T. Miyazi, Inc., out of North Kingstown. Anything further to add, Mr. Director?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion approved?
I'll move to award the contract to the low bidder, T. Miyazi Incorporated, 80 Compass Circle, North Kingstown, per the attached specifications.
Second.
Okay. We cleared legal? We cleared Joe? We're good? Everybody's good? Any questions or comments? Last chance to talk about bituminous concrete tonight. All those in favor? All right. Unanimous.
Thank you all. And just as a clarification, I have to confess that I, like Justin and Rob, pronounced it for quite a few years as Synthas, but I was corrected that it's Syntos.
Syntos.
Right.
Now you tell me.
That's all right. I've been doing it for a few years.
Don't worry. I won't remember. I'll get it wrong next time, anyway.
We need our, our backup materials need to be written for that. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. General business. Mr. Administrator, potential vote on a budget increase for the town planner salary. We have some introductory comments. Take it away, please.
Thank you. That item is worded quite boldly. That wasn't quite my wording, but it is true that I think it's necessary to talk about the budget level of the salary for the town planner position. The background is that, as you know, we have posted that position again. We actually had 14 applications altogether, out of which the Personnel Board decided that five met the basic requirements, and so five candidates were interviewed, after which three were forwarded to me for further consideration. Both Sue Gill of the Planning Board and myself participated in the interviews by the Personnel Board, as we often do to try and save time. And from the interviews, and also some follow-up interviews I had, it is clear that, and I should say that there are three candidates. I don't feel comfortable disclosing the particulars as to who they are, because not all of them have notified their current employers. I'd actually suggested an executive session discussion, but apparently that's a no-no. So here we are. And the argument that I can make for an increase in the salary, I could make anyway, but it's a significant increase. Two out of the three candidates are asking for $90,000, whereas the current budget is $76,500. That's obviously...
They're asking for 90?
90. That's actually a big difference. And I will be honest, I was reluctant to even bring it up, but in speaking to some people about this, I was encouraged to at least bring it before to council, because I think a lot of people feel that the $76,500, it's difficult to get truly highly qualified candidates. The reason why I think it can be justified to go up this much is that the candidate that would get this amount, if he were to vote so, and the two of these, they have masters in community planning from URI, they do have municipal experience, and they also have broad government experience, and in one case, private sector experience as well. They've held positions at different levels of authority where they're both definitely, actually, all three of them are able to supervise people. With the candidates that are asking for this, I will tell you that there is absolutely no hand-holding required, as we've had with some candidates. A significant amount of hand-holding sometimes, and not always successful for a variety of reasons. These are folks who can hit the ground running. I think what they would need to learn is more about Tiverton, per se, sort of the particulars, I hate to go there, the particulars of the town of Tiverton, but the conditions that we, you know, the issues and the challenges that we have here, but otherwise quite capable of picking up a challenge and running with it, and knowing enough to reach out to other people to make sure that they're part of the solution. I also look at it, I know, at least the Council President has mentioned a couple of times that he thinks I need a deputy, and every time he says that, I say, what I really need is a good planner. And I'm still very convinced that that is actually the higher priority, that would certainly provide a lot of relief to me and my responsibilities, but actually serves many more interests and purposes in this town as well. We've all heard many times and agreed, I believe, that this position in this town, a lot of the focus, if not the vast majority of the focus, is on the administrative officer responsibilities. So even though we can be happy that we get highly qualified planner, planners, we need to make sure that they can actually do the nitty-gritty of the administrative officer work. These candidates can do that, but they do have significant municipal planning experience. They do have experience with tackling larger projects from, you know, either working on a comprehensive plan or getting it done, helping with implementing it, things like that, dealing with major projects on, say, the state-level transportation project, whatever. I'm not saying that those are projects we currently are foreseeing in Tiverton, but the ability to take on that kind of a challenge, I think, is very important. You would definitely get your money's worth. That's my conviction. That doesn't mean that I say it's an easy sell to go from $76,500 to $90,000. I'm not quite sure what to tell you, other than you would get your money's worth.
And this is, around the state, planners are making more than what we're offering here.
That's correct. I actually have the list of the salary survey.
So it's $13,500 that you would, $13,500 that you would like to add to the base rate?
Right. And what you mentioned is, I believe, the state salary survey, and I looked at it at both Middletown and Portsmouth. Over $90,000, for example.
What kind of salaries are they making now where they are?
I think one is in the mid-80s, one, I actually wasn't able, I tried to find the current one, but I did make sure to have another conversation with that candidate to see if there was any flexibility, and there was not. And that happens to be actually, in my view, and I believe Sue's view as well, the top candidate.
So it wouldn't be possible to offer 85, and after six months, 90?
Or three months?
After us, you know, or some, I mean, I'm just asking because that's like, you know, a 90, and then after six months or a year, they're gonna look for an increase.
It wouldn't be for a year. I think that one person would not necessarily accept that delay. I think it's a reasonable counteroffer to say, we have a probationary period, we'd like to start, you know, for those six months at a lower level, whatever that may be. I have no idea what the response is going to be.
Right. I'm just saying that's maybe an offer that we could consider.
My opinion is, we've been struggling for years now, since I've been here to get a qualified planner, and I know how important that is to the Planning Board and also to the town. Someone in that office that can do this job will benefit us all around, and it'll benefit Yon also, because Yon, in many instances, does the job of the planner, and I've seen that happen. But I think it's really important that we have a qualified planner, and I think it's well worth it at this point. We've been struggling for years.
My opinion is, we've been struggling for years now since I've been here to get a qualified planner, and I know how important that is to the Planning Board, and also to the town. Someone in that office that can do this job will benefit us all around, and it'll benefit Jan also, because Jan, in many instances, does the job of the planner, and I've seen that happen. But I think it's really important that we have a qualified planner, and I think it's well worth it at this point. We've been struggling for years. We've probably had some lawsuits due to not having a particularly good planner, and I feel that this would really help move things along in that office and help with the problems we have there.
Can I just interject one very minor point? Jan indicated that he had discussed, we had discussed having this in executive session. The reason I recommend that we don't do that is because I think that while it's fine to talk about candidates in executive session, the broad budgetary discussion should be done publicly. I would also caution you to just try to limit your conversations with Jan to the broad budget discussions.
Well, right, and that's when I'm...
At some future point, if he chooses, he can bring specific candidate needs or negotiation points into executive session, but you probably don't want to do that, you know, during this discussion.
Jan, could you just talk a little bit more detail on how specifically filling this position at the higher rate would alleviate your task list or your daily work?
It's not the rate that would alleviate me.
Oh, no, but...
It's the person.
Or the justification for that.
And the competency and the skills that the person could bring to this position. I think that, in a way, the planner position has been underutilized for quite some time. I personally believe, notwithstanding what the charter says, that grant writing should be done in the planner or planning office, I think, because of the background that people have, the connections that people have, and, you know, the connection that grant writing has to planning. So, and I think that's a major responsibility, that someone with, you know, a lot of experience, it's not necessarily direct grant writing experience, but experience with grants, working with grants, knowing about grant programs, knowing how to go after it, is critical. You know, there are challenges that we have sometimes, even with looking at how you plan for infrastructure improvements, or, you know, I mean governmental infrastructure. When we talk about, how do you figure out whether or not, you know, we might need to think about different town buildings, for example? To do that in a professional way could be very helpful. You think about the work that has gone into planning for landfill closure, you know, having a professional planner with you on that would have been extremely helpful. I will say, it's those kinds of challenges. The one other thing I will say is, I've had one opportunity before to hire a planner, and then learned that that planner could actually be a really good town administrator.
Yeah, and she is.
And she is. And I do think about succession, including, you know, my own, and I think it's a responsibility of us, and finding people who actually, I haven't asked that question, but I have no doubt that, you know, one of these candidates, maybe two of them, could actually do that. And so even if it's for a temporary absence, or when I fade into the sunset, it would be helpful to have someone on board who, you know, at least in the interim, could serve that function as well.
Now, most planners can do grant writing also.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that would also be very helpful with us, with several projects we have going.
So the planner, I'm going from budget documents, is technically the department head of the building and zoning, so is that...
Yeah, that's how...
Well, first of all, I don't think the Landers Department was ever officially created. I mean, as far as I know, it's not in the charter. I know there have been discussions, they were before my time, so who am I to even talk about this? But my understanding was that there certainly was a desire on the part of quite a few people that we had in that direction. I personally agree with that direction, and then there were discussions, okay, so in that case, who should be the head of the department? I believe I, at the time, said, "Well, if you have to make that choice," and I think the logical choice typically would be the planner. But it really depends on the individuals and their respective competencies and strengths. So I think it was left open, but I also don't think that the Landers Department actually ever was created. Even so, it is important that those two departments work together very, very closely, and that you have someone who can sort of take the responsibility for overall management and budgeting and what have you. I don't know if that answered your question.
We can do that without a charter change, because I think under just the general council powers, that's something you want to see happen, just...
I thought we did do it.
I think if I remember correctly, we did that.
Well, you would know better than I.
Yeah, we did do that. We actually did that.
Okay.
But because of the way that it was written in the charter, we proposed a charter change that would have formally created it, so it would have cleared up the inconsistency in the charter, but that was voted down in the charter. So the council voted to actually do that, and it was left at the discretion of the town administrator, who would be the department head, knowing that, you know, at different times, depending on who was in which roles, who would be the department head. So we did, but...
It was done before you, so, yeah.
Thank you for that.
But the language in the charter that would correspond to it was voted down, so...
I think that, I'm just looking at the charter, I think there's a requirement in the Building Department that they be a qualified building official, which a planner may or may not be.
No, 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 but there is a building official in the department.
Combined requirement.
Yeah, there is a building official under the planner.
It's a little bit of a detour, but one of the reasons, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it matters necessarily whether it's the department or not, but one of the things, since you brought it up, since it stops me, this is too astray, is that, I mean, it is my view that there, if there cannot be, I had originally contemplated something like a half-time planner, maybe a half-time deputy town administrator. If that can't work, I do think that this council should consider in the future identifying one of our department heads, and if you like this model, then the planner would need to be a department head, to be, to also wear the secondary or collateral duty of being a deputy TA, or perhaps there should be a duty town administrator, a duty backup that could rotate among the department heads for redundancy, institutional knowledge, for their own professional development, for a whole host of reasons. So I just wanted to give a little more context to, since you brought it up, since you did such a nice job making a persuasive argument on that. I am a little nervous about the 18% variance from what the people of the town voted for. I am familiar, I know there's a language in the charter that allows us to make adjustments for unanticipated needs and shortfalls. I think, given the struggle that we've had with hiring this position, I think, I think we've got a fair case to say that. I know I'm personally comfortable with 5%, I'd probably be talking to 10%, 18% starts getting me a little bit nervous. I don't know if anybody else shares that concern, or has a point of view on that, or if Legal has a thought on how far we can vary.
I just have a, I guess my initial thought, and I don't know if anyone else thought, is that, was it advertised in the paper for 76,500?
The advertisement did not mention the salary.
No mention.
No, but, you know, people these days know enough to, if they want to, they can find out what the budget is.
And just look at the budget.
Is there any of the budget?
Yeah, no, I just, I was just asking, because, you know, to come and then interview for it, and then go, "Well, I want 90," I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me.
It can be the other way around, too.
Is there a way, I'm sorry, to try to bridge this gap with Donna's question, I think, and I heard about the probationary, I mean, maybe a 5% variance through the probationary period to catch us to July 1st, and then with the next budget? Obviously, we can't make a guarantee what the budget would do, but I feel like that'd be a little more, that would combine the probationary period with the spirit of the FTR that voted for this number. Does that help?
I just don't want to risk losing qualified people, which we have not. We've been having a hard time with this. So I don't want to risk losing qualified people.
The voters just voted for this budget just a couple of months ago, right?
Yeah, but we have changed salaries according to the needs, and according to what is out there. I would just hate to lose people that are qualified.
That's why I said offer 85, and then six months down the road. We see...
Well, 10% is really good, or she, we say, go to the 90. He or she, them, whatever.
A 10% variance, for those that are interested in that, it would be $84,150.
So I say 85.
I'm just one vote, but going over 10% of the variance of what the voters just voted on two months ago, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with that.
So I think, though, we have to, the market is telling us something. We haven't been doing this for one year. We're now on, like, year five of trying to get a really qualified planner here, and we can't. And so we've either gotten applicants, or accepted, or hired people that really didn't have the skills that we wanted, but they were the best of what applied at that salary range, and it's never worked out. You know, at the end of the day, it hasn't worked, and so I think that the market is telling us something. And I think that, that we can't keep making the mistake that we've made in the past, which is, okay, well, this person isn't really quite even, you know, it's the best of what we have, and we hire them, because for a long time, the planning department is basically treading water. I mean, we've talked for years, and if you, I had a nickel for every time somebody came in front of the council and said, "Our zoning ordinances need to be updated," we would have a lot of nickels here. And we really haven't been able to tackle that, because we don't have somebody in the building who's got the skills to do the construct of writing zoning ordinances, and really updating the zoning code, which desperately needs to be updated. And when we try and do it sort of as volunteers or amateurs, I mean, the solar ordinance is a classic example of something that was well-intentioned, that everybody thought, they thought it all the way through, and, okay, we have this problem, and we're trying to solve this for the farmers, and, you know, what happens is, here comes the law of unintended consequences, because there was nobody here to look at that, that really understood how to, you know, follow the logic of that all the way through. So the, so the planning board is just, or the planning department is just sort of treading water with the old zoning ordinances, and we've got all this stuff. And just a couple of things, because I pulled the municipal salary survey. I'm just going to really quickly read you the list of communities that pay a planner somewhere between $88,000 and up. Barrington, Bristol, Burrville, Coventry, East Greenwich, East Providence, Middletown, North Kingstown, North Smithfield, Portsmouth, Providence, South Kingstown, and Woonsocket. So you can see that, you know, that the salaries are out there for the good qualified people.
What was the median range you found?
You know, I didn't, I honestly, I didn't pull the median, I just looked at the communities that were above. This is available online. Some towns have part-time planners, too, so it was a little hard, because it doesn't say, you know, how many days that they work. But I seem to remember when I looked at it quickly in descending order, we're not at the very bottom, but we're not anywhere near the top half. We're sort of...
We're not even in the middle.
But it is online, you could see. But I'm just letting you know that, in terms of who we're competing with, you know, these towns all pay really well, and that's where the good people go. And the sort of, you know, I get it, nobody wants to say, "We just passed a budget, and, you know, now we're going to have to increase this salary." But just by way of example, so the Community Comprehensive Plan, which is basically sitting there, has a lot of good things in it that would help us improve the economic situation in this town, if we could, you know, get our act together in getting it implemented. But we don't have anybody here to do it. And one of the things that's in this Community Comprehensive Plan is to resume, is to, for example, and this is something you need a competent, qualified planner to do, is to review the density in every single one of our residential zones. Because right now, Tiverton's got 7,500 housing units in total. Based on just, you know, sort of, and this is conservative estimate, of how much buildable land we have left in Tiverton, if you were talking about just single-family homes, we could be looking at another 3,200. When you factor in on top of that, that of that available acreage, 3,000 acres of that is zoned for multifamily and multiple units, and then you look at the fact that the commuter rail is coming from Boston to Fall River, if we don't start and think about things like this now, then, you know, we could end up with 12,000. I mean, just on the, what's there to develop, you're looking at 11,000, and that's in single-family. If you throw in, you know, multifamily homes, we could be looking at 12,000 or 13,000 housing units. Doing that work isn't something that the council can tackle, that the planning board, you need somebody who knows how to do this. So as much as I know that nobody likes to go above the budget, I would argue that getting a good, qualified, competent planner in here, and increasing their salary by $14,000 is probably a lot less money than building a new elementary school, at the end of the day. And that's what a good planner can do for you. They can help us sort out all of that density.
I don't disagree with any of it, I'm just saying these are arguments for the Budget Committee, but I've had my say on that.
Questions from the public? Comments?
Can I have one other thing that I forgot to mention? I actually think it's important. So we do have a clerk, part-time in planning, part-time in zoning. The candidates that we're talking about would totally optimize the productivity of this person, in terms of being able to train, supervise, and work with this person, and there, too. You know, it all depends on who you have, and I think we have a very competent person in that, but who you work with, and who helps you do the most that you can do in that position, I think, is very important. And that's an important piece for us with this department, where you have one planner and one half-time clerk. You really need to be able to have someone who knows how to really get the most out of that limited resource.
I don't even know who these people are, with, I...
We don't...
And yet, I'm supposed to come up with 18% pay raise. I just feel really uncomfortable with it. And I, and we've been burned before, where we hire people, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but I feel more comfortable with maybe giving a small pay raise, reasonable, and then after six months, and we see that it's really going to work out well, consider what this person is asking for, whoever this person is. I have no idea, I have nothing in front of me, I just feel very uncomfortable with it.
If I may...
Personal.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce the point I made earlier, that this isn't about hiring a single person, right? This is a budget question. The hiring process will still have to go on separately, and one or more candidates may be considered, may be made offers, they, you know, what Jan is asking for, I believe, is a cap to be higher, that he can then work up to if needed. I think hiring process is a separate discussion.
Yeah, the two points that occurs to me to make, the first is, before there's a hire, I'd like to have the executive session where you could tell us, this is what the 18 additional money would be buying, in essence, in the candidate. And that can happen later on versus now. Also, just doing the math quickly, I, we've spent $3,000 out of the planning salary account. So there's, according to the latest, there's $73,500, which is awfully close to what would remain from now to the end of the fiscal year, to a $90,000 salary. So I'm not sure we would necessarily, we would really have to find the money, because the money's there, it's just we're paying it at an accelerated rate.
Yeah. Then we have to pay for the temporary...
Well, this is what's currently in it. What that, what that brings to my mind is the possibility of a one-year contract to the end of fiscal year, so 10 months or nine months, and then with extensions after that, and that would be approving time, in my view, possibly, rather than a six-month probationary period, just go to the end of the fiscal year, we've got that budget already there. I mean, it's just a way to, because I'm sympathetic in the number of times you've said you would prefer a planner to a deputy, I can, I can, that's definitely worthwhile to test and to see. And I would, just eyeballing the planner salaries around the state, I'd say we're probably in the top half, but I'm just eyeballing it. But there are a lot of communities, especially in the East Bay, that are over the 90,000. So these are all things to keep in mind as we go forward, but I'm not sure exactly what the vote would be. Are we looking for more of a consensus of the council tonight, to see if, if you came back to us with a candidate who wanted that much, that would even be possible? Is that the...
Well, he wants a cap, right, so...
I'm basically at a point where, you know, I... I'm basically at a point where, you know, I can't really talk for, to one of the candidates unless I know, I don't feel I have the authority to even go there. That's where I am. I think it's worth it, and I totally understand the discomfort at the same time. It's just, I believe, honestly, based on the work that we do when we vet candidates and we interview them, and we follow up with them, that it'll pay your money's worth. And, you know, exactly how it gets structured, maybe that's just another option that would be available to me to discuss with one of the more candidates, that either it's a trans- probationary period, or a longer way. I don't know that, I have a concern with one versus the other.
Well, I'm just thinking, if you were to use the budget as it's in there, for the, at the accelerated rate to get to the end of the year, that does give the opportunity for the budget cycle, and for you to make the case, at that point with four to six months' worth of experience, to make the case to us, then the Budget Committee, and then the people, to approve a higher budget for next year, that would be the, how that all could fall, if that fall out, in my view.
Just, I want to make sure I understand what you're suggesting. I think there should be a vote to authorize, you know, whether it's, how it's binding, I'm less concerned about, but I think to give him the clarity he needs. To answer President Coulter's concern, perhaps that vote could be structured to say that Jan is authorized to come back with a candidate and a financial proposal that does not exceed the budgeted amount by any more than ten percent. I believe that can be done, given the savings from the vacancy in that office, I could be wrong about that, but that might satisfy both. You may not need to exceed beyond ten percent the fiscal year spending. What that does require is that you propose to maintain that salary in a future year, which is for a future debate, but I think that's really the biggest concern. Jan can't go to a candidate and say, "Well, we're good until June," you know, and then it's up in the air, right? It has to be a sense of the council, at least, that that is, that is something that they're willing to commit to.
Jan, what you've said to us is, the ninety thousand is what these candidates are asking, qualified candidates. So do you feel that if we set eighty-five percent, the eighty-five thousand, we would lose these candidates? You can't just...
Just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting that. What I was suggesting is that you could, you could offer a ninety thousand dollar annualized salary, but you only have seven months of the year left.
Right.
So that will be a smaller number, that is probably captable in the amount remaining in that account.
But what kind of job security is that? We're going to offer you ninety thousand until July, and you, that's it? We don't know what's going to happen after that?
I think it has to be a longer-term commitment, that's why I think a vote is in order. I just don't think you have to exceed, per President Coulter's inclination, the already-approved dollars that were budgeted.
So...
But then it's putting it for the budget in May, that we would be asking for the ninety thousand.
Correct.
So, first of all, I'm assuming that if we were to hire anybody, they would have the standard six-month probationary period, just like every other department had, right? So, so there is that. You know, from my perspective, again, I think the market is telling us something. I will say that this is the first time since we've been trying to hire a planner, that I've ever actually had the town administrator say, "I have really qualified candidates." And I know that, I know that Susan told me that they were really qualified candidates. In all the years we've been doing this, I've never heard that. Every other time, it's been, "Well, we've got some candidates, and, you know, well, this one isn't..." I would really hate to see us lose, for the first time, the possibility of getting a really top-notch planner in here.
I don't think we have to lose, because it sounds like with the six-month probation, we're really, we're covered. We can offer him the ten percent, you know, basically...
So we can offer him the ninety thousand?
The ninety, and if we don't like him in six months...
Exactly. But I, but I think that we should give Jan the authority to negotiate to a maximum of ninety, and then, you know, if in six months, we don't think we're getting our money's worth, or we've overpaid, okay, then, then, but if we do, I just don't want to, like I said, I've never heard a town administrator say before, "I've got some really great candidates" ever. It's always been, "We're going to make do with the, you know, and..."
Make a motion.
So I'll make, so I'm going to make a motion to authorize Jan to negotiate salary up to ninety thousand dollars as an annual salary with these candidates, and of course, assuming that whatever final decision in their contract includes a six-month probationary period.
Second?
Okay, we have a live motion on the floor. Is any further questions or comments from the council?
I have one comment for you. Are you, does that satisfy your ten percent?
No, it does not. I still think we're... I think we're just setting a path to the eighteen percent. Well, I mean, I'm just one person, I think that a five percent variance is ordinary course. I think we could make specific findings easily here, that there's been a difficulty. I mean, if anything, what we, what we all know is that it's not even an unanticipated need, we know this is a longstanding need. So I think we're really flirting with the charter issue here, but I think ten percent, with those findings, I could go to eighty-four, one, five, oh. But that's just my point of view, since you asked. Anything from the public? As we struggle to fill the planner, who will also be, who would also be the administrative officer, right? Is that a separate, that's not a separate account we can go through?
No, they would... And that's what we need more than anything.
Yeah, yeah, it's a tough one. All right, is there any objection proceeding to vote? Okay, we have a live motion on the floor, would authorize the town administrator to negotiate a cap of ninety thousand dollars, up from seventy-six, five, with the standard six-month, and I guess, as always, we would be subject to our ratification, and for those that want an executive session on a specific candidate, I guess you can ask for one, and I'll try to talk you out of it, but... Is that, is that fair?
Those are, those items are just presumed with any such contract, they're not a part of the motion from Councilor Hilton, I just want to be clear, that her motion was simply the approval of ninety thousand, but you're right, those are all conditions that are, you know, typical and required.
Well, my motion did include the mandatory, the six-month probationary period.
Yes. Okay. All right, any objection to proceeding to vote? Okay, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? Any abstained? I think that carries four to three. Okay.
Five to five.
I'm sorry, five to two. All right. I...
Donna?
Donna, okay, five to two. All right. There you have it.
Thank you.
All right, next we have...
I'm very loud, I'll go outside.
So this is the casino litigation, Harrop versus the Rhode Island Division of Lotteries. You may recall, a couple weeks ago, we, or was it a couple months ago, we asked for public input on whether to take a position, as a town, for or against or neutral on the question of whether sports betting was properly voted in. We decided to, and the related question to that was whether and how many town expenses to try to spend in this, in this debate. We did stay neutral on that, and actually, why don't I ask the solicitor for an update for that, because once we hear the update, I'm going to be asking for further input from anybody that has any, on whether we should change that neutral position or not. And that's, that's why this is on the agenda. Did, Joe, did you want to give us an update?
I'm going to recuse.
Okay, we have a recusal?
So the hearing on the motion to dismiss the case for la, for two, for multiple reasons, the motion to dismiss the case was heard by Judge Stern in Superior Court. Arguments were made by both sides, or all sides, I should say, and in a few days later, the judge in fact ruled that the case would be dismissed effectively for lack of standing. That being, that Dr. Harrop was not sufficiently an interested party, and did not have a true interest. The judge did, in his, in his oral decision, indicate two, two points, which caused us to continue to have to discuss this. One was that, he indicated that if Dr. Harrop had in fact lost a bet, which was not pleaded in the original case, that could change his analysis of the standing question. So standing as a taxpayer, standing as a citizen generally, standing as a voter, did not pass muster under Rhode Island law, but standing as a gambler who had lost a bet and had real financial harm, would have caused the judge perhaps to come up with a different outcome. He didn't promise a different outcome, he just said the analysis would be different. The second point that he made was that if either the town of Tiverton or the town of Lincoln had been plaintiffs to this matter, that may also have changed the calculus, and the decision could have gone a different way. Tiverton, although we did submit a position statement essentially, we did not take a position either as a defendant or a plaintiff, we were simply a mandatory third-party who was required by the judge to be a participant. We did make an argument, as we've discussed in prior meetings, saying that we believe that towns such as Tiverton and Lincoln should have standing, because the voters in a town, you know, should have a say in these issues, and if there's a lack of clarity, then a town may want to express an interest as to, as to what is before the voters, what comes back to the voters. You know, I made the argument to the judge in the hearing, that if, if we are excluded, then, then the casino could expand infinitely without any further voter input in Tiverton, and I thought that would be inappropriate. I thought the Tiverton Town Council or the voters may want to have a say if there are future expansions. And I think the judge heard that, because he did in his decision indicate that if Tiverton was a plaintiff, that may also alter the calculus. So since then, there has been an, the motion, the order has entered on the motion to dismiss, however, the plaintiffs, Dr. Harrop, have asked to amend their complaint to plead additional facts, and particularly that Dr. Harrop cast a vote and lost a bet, apparently betting against, for the Patriots, I believe it was, and...
I should hope so.
Yeah. And, and so now, IGT and the casinos have filed an objection to that motion. So now we are lost, remain, I shouldn't say lost, we remain in procedural limbo to some extent. We, I don't believe, have any opinion on this one way or the other. That being said, you do have an opportunity, as the town, to do what the plaintiff did, which is reassert your position. If you chose to come in as a plaintiff, that could alter the calculus, but I would not advise that, given the cost, unless there was some compelling, you know, desire to assert the standing issue on behalf of your voters. But it would be an expensive effort.
What, is Lincoln, are they, any of the other...
They have done nothing at this point.
Casino towns doing anything?
No. And I haven't talked, Tony DeSisto, your former solicitor, is the solicitor in Lincoln. I've talked to Tony regularly throughout this process, I have not talked to him since the decision came down, because it is my expectation that Lincoln will continue to not take a position on this going forward.
Okay, so nice, nice job by our solicitor to navigate this neutrally. We proposed to remain neutral, and this is your chance to let us know if you'd like us to not stay neutral. Any questions or comments? Okay, anything from the council?
I have some comments. I'm, after all of this, I'm a little bothered, because I'm not sure that this has been as clear to me, and as clear to the citizens, as I thought it was, after this hearing. So it was explained to us that we had to respond, that we were required to produce a response to the judge. But Lincoln hasn't responded at all, they haven't filed anything. So we filed something, but Lincoln chose not to. And then, from what I've read at the, we took a vote here, based on Mr. Chichioni's advice, that the only thing that we were going to tell the court was that we hoped that this was finished expeditiously, that there was an expeditious decision. But then, in the reporting, and so I checked on this, that there was some discussion by Mr. Chichioni about the town's position and our feeling on whether or not this was constitutional or unconstitutional. And, and I'm, I have to admit, I'm a little bothered that I thought we authorized one statement that became a larger statement, and that not one, but two attorneys from Cameron and Middleman represented us at the hearing? Is that true?
I attended, along with Justin Shea, the litigation counsel.
Okay, but it...
Although I may have mentioned at the last meeting that I billed for that under the general retainer, so there's no additional cost for my attendance at the hearing, only one attorney billed you for that time under litigation.
Okay, but still, I mean, that's, I mean, and then, sort of, you know, and again, this could just be the press, but afterwards, you've got Joe Larissa, who's Mr. Harrop's attorney, on WPRO the next day, talking about Tiverton being, you know, potentially having standing, and that quote-unquote, "I've got two counselors, I only need a third," which I don't think he realizes our quorum is for. So, you know, and then, and I didn't know this, and I'm going to say this very carefully, because I am not accusing anybody, because I don't know the laws, but I didn't realize, Mr. Chichioni, that Mr. Harrop was a board member of your political action committee to stop the insanity of which you're an incorporator and a board member, correct? Yes?
That organization no longer exists, and hasn't since prior to my time representing Tiverton, but at one point he was, and also he is, as Mr. Katz has recused, over the board member of another prior client of mine.
Okay.
Which I think I disclosed under, at the first discussion of this in public session.
I don't, I don't remember ever hearing that, and as far as, I mean, I don't know whether your, I mean, I know your entity existed in 2018, because there were reports filed in 2018, but I, I'm just saying, I would feel more comfortable, I would have felt more comfortable knowing that there was some relationship between you and the plaintiff. So here's my question, are there any other pieces to this that have potentially not been disclosed?
I don't think there's anything that hasn't been disclosed. I will tell you anecdotally, that I keep taped to my wall, the wall of my office, a fascinating chart that shows all of the nonprofit entities that I've been involved with and represented over the years, and their connections to Dr. Harrop, and probably five or six other people. I found it on a website, or it was sent to me, I forget, back in December. I, I'm happy to bring a copy in, I think it's, I think it's quite interesting. It probably captures about half of the actual nonprofit work I do, but it is quite interesting. So no, I don't think there's anything else relevant to disclose. That being said, I want to get back to your original point about the hearing and the additional, I haven't read the reporting, so I don't know, I certainly don't read the online commentary. But I can tell you that at the hearing, the oral arguments themselves, I did stand up at one point and make a comment beyond what was submitted as previously approved by you, because Mr. Larissa, and I believe perhaps the defendant, other defendants as well, were misrepresenting the position of the town. And I didn't want to let the judge believe that we were anything but a third party who had been brought in here. We were not taking a position as a plaintiff, we were not taking a position as a defendant, and in some of the arguments from this quite long hearing, there were misrepresentations about this town's position. So my purpose in standing and addressing the judge at that hearing was only to clarify the limits of the position that you authorized.
So...
If it helps, I can jump in, too, that I also heard this rumor about councillors, so I was actually also on the same radio show, not the same day, but twice I was on that radio show, and confirmed that this town council is neutral and has been, and is going to be soliciting further input. So I, I don't, I don't know where this rumor has come from, but I don't know, I've done everything I could to quell it.
So, so could I see a copy of the brief that was filed? I mean, could the council have a copy of that brief?
I believe it's already been circulated, but yes. Sorry, which brief? The brief that the town submitted?
The brief that the town submitted, or the statement that the town submitted?
It was, it was the original, yes, the pleading that, yes.
I don't think we, I don't have a copy of it, I mean...
I'd be, okay, if you don't, I'm happy to research or circulate it, if I have it.
Could I, could I please, yeah, I would like, I would like to have a copy of the, of the pleading that was submitted, if that's okay.
I guess I just want to know, are we all on the same page on staying neutral? That's the most important thing. Okay. And we're using the lightest possible touch to...
We just wanted to make sure we stayed neutral.
Yes, although I'd also, and I, I appreciate the solicitor's comments about, we're only paying for one litigator on this, but I also want to be mindful of, if we're trying to stay neutral, that we are careful about the litigation bill, you know, briefs, lawyers, it all has a way of adding up, on a case that in theory, we're trying to stay out of.
And again, that's, that is my advice to the council tonight, is to take no... And again, that's, that is my advice to the council tonight, is to take no further action. I don't believe it's necessary, the judge is not indicating that he's demanding it, he simply pointed out that his calculus would have been different if we had come in as a plaintiff. And I, and I did stand during the hearing to make the point that that is not our position.
I could just say too, it's quite common for a general counsel to join litigation counsel in a major case, so I appreciate your being there, especially off the clock. Okay, last chance, we're going to stay neutral on this. Lightest touch possible, all right? No matter what you may hear from the plaintiff? Okay. All right, I don't think we need a vote, do you have the guidance that you need?
I believe my guidance is do nothing, so yes.
Guidance is, okay, very well. All right, let's get our vice president back, he's still with us. And thank you very much. We are, little admin, a little piece of admin. Formats and track sheets, remind us where we left this, please?
Yeah, well, we had left it with some questions about what I had circulated last time. I had promised to update it for the last meeting, and then we could discuss it today. I haven't updated it, but I think it's still, still a valid question, just to discuss, get feedback on, now that everybody's had a week or two weeks to review what had been handed out last time, how closely that tracked with people's comfort levels for what would be posted on our webpage as far as tracking issues.
But is the updated version, the update available?
No, I just said I haven't had a chance to update it, but the, I know, for example, there was the one section of completed issues that you had initially, on first sight, as you mentioned, had some questions about, so it's still germane. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose to change anything from that format, and certainly wouldn't propose to change anything as far as the timeframe we had discussed of two days to review anything before it went on, online. So I just, this would be an opportunity to give me feedback on, I mean, it says vote, I think consensus would be fine on that format was fine, that format was fine except for X or Y. That's basically what I'm looking for tonight.
You would like a vote?
Well, I don't know.
I think it's great, and I appreciate all the work you're putting into it, so tell me, tell us what you'd like to see happen.
I will just...
I just, maybe people need to have the opportunity to edit, I think was the, was the key takeaway, right?
Well, I had, I had circulated it, I think it had been later in the process of getting out the package, so people who were just seeing the thing for the first time and hadn't had a chance to review it. So, this is really just following up with that. My expectation is, my, my feeling is that if, if there are no additional comments, I can update it again, or update it and send it out with the two-day expectation, and people can respond and say, no, this is no good, you can't do it. And we can do that administratively through the clerk, as far as just sort of getting that on the website. And if that's the general sense and there aren't objections to that, we'll, I'll proceed under that understanding.
So just to try to summarize, we have a lot of administrative duties, and one that our vice president has volunteered to do is try to kind of keep a tracker of things we're working on and what's coming up on the horizon. The idea is, as it is updated, it's distributed to all council. If there's no edits or objections to any of the content after a couple of days, then it goes to the website. Of course, it's not binding, no matter whether it goes to the website or not, this is the admin, that's the workflow?
Purely informed.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Has it been distributed yet?
No.
There's a, the next one hasn't come out yet.
The original was, I haven't updated it.
Okay. Anything that...
I think that my suggestion would be that, that it possibly be done at a, at a higher level, and hear me out, let me explain what I mean by that, than what I saw the last time. I don't think, I think, you know, people are only going to read through so much stuff. And I think when you start putting in, you know, sort of little smaller things, after a while, it just becomes just another piece of paper and people aren't going to look at it. So my suggestion would be that, that you really, if you're going to do this, you try and stay to the big, the big items, not every little administrative thing. I mean, we have agendas for a reason, and the agendas have, you know, more detail in them. You know, I think if you want people to look at it, it should be the bigger stuff. I don't think that there should be any editorial comments at all. I think that that is, you know, there'll be disagreement, so just, you know, sort of the facts would be better. I think, you know, scheduling is good. I worry a little bit that, that also, you know, some of the things that, that this council stepped into, that if we start listing those, we potentially give people the wrong impression about what things appropriately go to the council and what things appropriately go to the department heads and then, you know, to the town administrator, that somehow looking at some of these things, oh, well, you know, I'm just going to bring this right to the council. So, I would say shorter's better than longer. Really, the, the big things, not every small little thing that the council's tackling, future dates, or a plan to have a discussion in a certain timeframe, that would be my suggestion. And I do think that the rest of the council should be able to review it before it gets posted.
Just in response to that, a lot of the, I mean, I sympathize, and that was part of the reason I had trouble conceiving of the idea of how to put it together, you know, you want to do big things, but a lot of what I hear from questions about are the little things. Oh, whatever happened to that, you know, suburban farming problem, you know? And the idea is it's on this long list on a website, you hit Ctrl+F and you do farm, and it brings you down to that line, you go, oh, okay, that's sitting with somebody or that's been done, not, there's nothing been done. That was my only thinking there.
I think the problem is that most people don't do Ctrl+F. I mean, they, after a while, it just becomes a really long list of things. That's, I think, probably not, not, not everybody wants to go...
In a future direction, I want to build some kind of a search into it, but, but this was just to get something started, but I'll, I'll take another crack at it and get it out.
I don't want to be argumentative, but I'm a more, I like all of it, so I don't know that Trish and I'll ever, you'll ever be able to satisfy both, so. But maybe there's a way to classify major from minor, I, I don't want to micromanage it, so whatever you, whatever makes people happy.
Possible.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll let this pass. Anything further on the, on a format of a tracking sheet?
No.
Okay. All right, discussion only, thank you. This is another follow-up item, I think about a month ago, we voted and approved what I think may be the first of the state, or first of the history of the state, of releasing in a deliberate manner, all closed executive session minutes at the appropriate time. That policy was adopted, we did, we stayed a decision on audio tapes, and I think the plan is for the solicitor and the clerk to spend some time kind of thinking about mechanics. I don't know if you've had some time to do that, if you need more time, anything to update us on?
I can give you my, my piece of the update. I think, you know, Nancy will, will express her concerns about the ability to logistically, you know, get through this, and I, and I do share them. We, we took three meetings, Nancy picked in the envelope, there are three tapes, cassette tapes, typical cassette tapes, from a variety of meetings over a different span of years. And I took those and tried to find a vendor or some mechanism for taking those cassettes and making them digital so that they were more easily reviewed and transmitted to somebody who might request, under the Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act, a copy of the minutes, sorry, a copy of the audio. The, my, my takeaway is, and it's not, you know, certainly not a completed review, my takeaways are that unless you have a dedicated piece of audio equipment that directly takes these tapes, which are very poor sound quality generally, and, 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 you know, through a cable directly digitizes them onto a hard drive or a removable disc of some sort, you lose a lot more sound quality just by playing it out loud and recording it onto a digital device. So the tapes that we have done, I do have three of these now digitized, but they're very difficult to hear. And so I would reckon, the, the equipment is $35, it's not an expensive investment. If, if the firm thought this would be a regular request, we would certainly buy it. If the clerk thought it was a regular issue for her, she could certainly, you know, buy it, I'm sure in her budget. But, you know, but that being said, is then the step of, you know, finding some, some software that's a little more vigorous than what comes on a typical computer pre-installed that would allow you to then edit out sections. And again, I don't think it's a big investment, I think, you know, what I'd like to do is maybe take a little more time and try to do that part of it. And I, I don't think Nancy would object to more time received, but I'll let her speak for herself.
Well, definitely, we're going to need more time on these tapes. I mean, just to be able to edit out or just get to the part you want. But to tie in with that, I have been working on this policy. And I need to tell you clearly, I'm not going to be able to get this done, I'm not going to be able to follow through with some of this. Going forward is nothing, but what I have started to do is index everything. I have to have a starting point, I can't just say, I have no idea, you know, years ago, we just put litigation, we did not, it wasn't a requirement that you list the topic of the litig, so I have to go through. I've got about 600 of them to go through for me. And what I've started to do, which I've tried to put whatever time I could put into this, is to index everything, and that's my starting point. So even to get the written minutes out there, that I, I would know what to redact on them, I would have to sit with the solicitor, at least, you know, highlight my redactions and send them to him, and he'd have to look at them and send them back to me. But before I could start anywhere, to find out, some are easier than others, but I have to index everything, and it's time-consuming. So I have to tell you, I don't know how I'm going to comply with this policy. I won't let them go if I'm not, I am...
We'll have to do the best we can, and as we discussed last time, I think the Attorney General will be understanding.
Well, I spoke to the Attorney General's office, and I don't think they're going to be as understanding as you think you are.
Chinxus. See, another month? Sounds like you got three case studies in the works, you want another month or two?
Well, I'm going to be, I can tell you this, in that month, I am not going to be handling any request for them, I am going to continue to index.
This is just, no, I meant on the testing of the software.
Testing of...
Well, you're asking, you're holding off on the vote to include audio until?
Yeah, I think, you're talking about trying to jack the, the audio directly into some kind of a receiver, or some kind of a computer that can perhaps improve the audio quality and hopefully lead to a direct transcription, right?
Yeah, my, my goal is to try to preserve the shoddy audio quality of some of these tapes as best we can. I think we're not, it's not awful, but it's, it's, you know, it's not great either, so I think we just need a slightly better technical solution.
The good news is we have a DJ in the back of the room, a recreation commission, maybe it can help you.
I do want to say that the tapes I gave them, one was from 2018, one from 2015, one from 2010. But I've been here 15 years and go back to 2005, so those tapes are going to be even worse than this.
Okay.
So the minutes are easier than the tapes, but even the minutes at this point...
Why don't we, why don't we, I propose we give this two months? Touch base and see how, does that give you enough time? I'm not saying solve the whole world, but on the technology question for two months. Is there any objection to?
No, but, but... Can I clarify one thing? Just for, for the clerk's sake, because my understanding was that if we're going to release these things, you have to release the audio tapes, that you couldn't release just the minutes and not the audio tapes. That's what my understanding of what we were told was, that that's what the Attorney General's office said. Correct?
That was, that was what my advice and what I conveyed, based on what they, what they suggested. However, I think also, when the council made this vote, it was not to do that, and there is an argument to be made that, that's the council's discretion. So I think, you know, that, an argument to be made.
Right. So, but, so here's the thing though, but, I mean, at the end of the day, to be fair to Nancy, right, because, because if, if we're not clear on this, if somebody files an APRA request for all this stuff, I mean, supposing, you know, those good government organizations that are out there and that are around right now, that Common Film, you, you, yes?
Am I aware of them?
Yeah, right, they're, I mean, there was one, they've been here recently, right?
Oh, yes, yes, I know you mean them.
Right? So, you know, if...
I thought you would, but I was waiting.
Right? So, you know, if we're not clear on where we are on this, because now I'm not clear on where we are on this, if one of them shows up tomorrow and says, I'm filing an APRA request for every executive session minute going back to 2000, like, where exactly are we on, on this? Are we at the point where we're saying, yes, we want to do it, but we haven't officially done it yet, pending getting these other things done?
My, my understanding is that you've already voted to release the paper minutes.
Unconcluded matters only.
I don't think, no.
I have the motion either.
Unconcluded matters only.
Concluded matters only, subject to review period.
But not the auto, audio.
Okay. But, but, but unconcluded matters only, so I'm just asking this, if we haven't indexed what the concluded matters are, what happens if somebody comes in and says, I want the executive session minutes from every concluded matter back to 2000, from, back from 2000? What do we do?
I think all you can do is make your best effort to try to comply with that, although I agree with Nancy that we would fail to comply with that.
Right.
At which point, the Attorney General would, you know, assess our, our level of effort, and they would probably say that we made a violation, but, you know, what, what's the, what's the punishment, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's within their discretion. So I think that we would have to make our best efforts, we would, we would, you know, the vote, the vote has occurred, these are, these are unsealed at this point.
I would add as well, that the, the person who has made this request, by the way, I don't believe had a single request in the month that this policy's been live, can be charged for that effort, right? And although, maybe, maybe Gio doesn't agree with me, but I also think we would have a strong argument on impracticability, so if we can demonstrate good faith efforts, I don't know that that leads to violation. It just leaves, because I don't think the Attorney General wants us to just reseal everything, right?
No. I think it can be gradually opened. I think to say it all opens is the problem, because I believe the APRA request, I can be personally fined. So, you know, my response is going to be, I don't have any. Because until you approve that that is a closed issue, and there's nothing legally liable to the town in it, I'm not going to say it's a closed issue. Who am I to say it's closed?
Right. But we have to approve that.
The council's going to have to.
Yeah, this is a closed issue.
And I think I probably should have also mentioned that the, the other practical answer to your question, Counselor Hilton, is that if somebody came in and made that request, it would be 2000, you have 600 tapes? 2,000 hours worth of work at $15 per hour, the first hour's free. The, the bill that we would send them and require them to pay in advance would be tens of thousands of dollars. So if one of those good government groups wants to take a swing at that and write the check, then we're on the hook.
And I understand about the tapes, but on the minutes, we can't charge them for the minutes.
We can, we can charge them from the time, for the time, yes.
Yeah, because you have to look to see if they're...
Now, it may not be 2,000 hours, but it, but it...
No, but you still have to figure out if, if the matter's closed.
You would certainly require them to pay for that upfront and charge them for the time as the statute allows, and that would be hundreds of dollars at the very least.
Okay. And, and then the last thing is, while we're in this process, has anybody asked the trust about this?
Yes, yes, it was one of the first calls I made when this, when this issue came up. You know, they, they are obviously sensitive to pending litigation, but given that the vote only covered closed matters and pending litigation is not closed, they, they had less concern.
Well, it's not just pending litigation, it's that if we disclose something, I mean, if we disclose something that we shouldn't have disclosed, right?
Will they cover us?
Will they cover us?
We're also back to something we discussed last time as well, where opening these up doesn't mean they're all subject to APRA, there's still all of the standard exemptions from APRA that apply. So what they have to do is find something that's closed, that we've gone, approved as closed, that is not subject to one of the APRA exemptions.
Which is concluded. Well, right, 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 closed.
So, so all of those things would have to go forward in order for them to...
That's a lot of work, though.
But the point being that determining, even the paper minutes, determining that a matter is all of those things is something we can charge for that time of review. And that, that could lead somebody to come and say, okay, I'm not interested in 20 years, I'm interested in this particular thing, which would be a lot less arduous to address.
Okay, so the agenda tonight is about the audio, okay? It is 10 minutes to 10 at night. Are we, does anybody have an objection to giving two more months to the team to just look at the technology and see if the audio is feasible?
Nope.
We're trying to, we're trying to do good things here, right? So, okay. Is that, is that, can that, can that pass by consensus? All right. Okay. Let's talk about parks and playgrounds and how they go together. Let's talk about parks and playgrounds and how they go together. That's more fun, right?
No, certainly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We've got co-sponsors, Nancy and Justin. I will let you take it from here. Discussion and initial action on a town farm playground and development grant opportunities. Lots and lots of backup.
That sounds a lot more determinative than it is. So after our last meeting, it, it sounded like there was still a lot of work to be done, just, that could be correct or incorrect. And, and more importantly, there was a lot of, a lot of feedback that playgrounds, a playset replacing what has been removed from Town Farm would be super expensive. So Councilor Digs and I started to look to get a sense of the cost, just so we would know how it works. And during that time, the DEM announced its grant program, so we started thinking in those terms as well. And what you have in your packet is, it, it's actually a lot thicker than, than it, than what it substantively is. I've gotten here the, the DEM grant application along with the, the grading criteria. There are a few initial, I don't want to call them quotes, but estimates of what playsets would be. We have since heard from an installer that these companies are, are fine, but they might be a little bit lower end than what municipals, municipalities typically do. So we did go out and get some additional pictures and, I mean, this is fun stuff, especially when your kids are in your room looking over your shoulder at the computer. So we got a few more additional prices, just to see if the stuff that was recommended, one of these companies did the one in Jamestown that a lot of people have talked about, just to see what the, if the, if that was a deal breaker, if the ones we had looked at were so much lower that it changed the substance of, of a, a grant request. And it didn't, it was still within a budget to, a budget table range. So we did that, and in looking at the grant request, again, not knowing what steps others had taken, I just put together, because I can't stop myself, a, an initial, some initial thoughts I had responding to a grant request, what sorts of things we might want to conceive of to be in there. After we put this on the agenda, that's when, at least I heard for the first time, that the Recreation Commission had done some of the same work, particularly Stuart Gilmfellow, and then it's not in my intent on this at all to step on anybody's toes.
But didn't we have, wasn't that discussed, though, that they were working on some of this?
No, not, oh.
But my impression from that conversation, and I could have been incorrect, was, it was, it was kind of general, and they're working on it. And at the time, what we started to look into was the, the pricing of a playset, and just the grant appeared in that, the interim, and we put some thought into that. That's all that's happened so far. In con, after hearing from Mr. Gilmfellow and about some of the work he's done, he, Jan and I had an informal conversation on Friday. It's unfortunate he can't be here for this, but there was some, I, I don't want to say disagreement, just some different ideas about what kind of a, a grant to pursue. As I had put in this, my thinking is, we've got two goals in my mind, replace a missing piece of equipment very quickly, and as Jan had suggested when I met with him and Chris last year, a longer term master plan for, for Town Farm, so we can start implementing something big like that. So those are the two things I was keeping in mind. And as it happens, the, the EM grants come in two sizes, and you can apply for more than one. There are smaller grants, which would be suitable for replacing a piece of equipment, and our larger grants would be more suitable for the larger project. Whereas what I heard from Stu, and we didn't go into a great amount of detail, which I'm hoping we can do some more tonight, is there was, he was in the Recreation Commission, we're looking at more in a middle ground between those, replace the bad equipment, maybe a couple other areas around Town Farm, that wouldn't be the full half million dollar project that would be the larger ask to DEM. So I, I spoke with DEM, and certainly you need a, a budget, just to get a sense of what they mean when, when they say, do we need to know which piece of equipment we're buying, et cetera? And just general response, they said, no, it's a, it's a, it's a budget, you're putting in a budget, you can, you can vary within your request there. And that's basically where we are. The grant application requires public input and evidence of broad agreement across the town that you're going to move forward and stick with the project. And the one, one note that's worth making is, one of the criteria they look at, criterions they, they look at is proof that you've maintained your, your equipment that you have, which is a particular problem here. And so I'm, I'm hoping we can do what, again, Jan and I, and Chris and I had discussed last year, make this, part of this would be an effort to restructure how we, and, and have a solid line of authority for how we maintain our, our equipment and keep it going. And so again, that's where we are. What I would propose, the deadline for the grant is December 10th. I would propose we start having hearing, have a hearing in the near future to get more public participation, Recreation Commission and us, I think would be appropriate, and get a, get the idea of where we're going with this. And if we can do this within the next couple of weeks, then from there, we have still two months for, for the grant to be created.
Nancy, did you want to, your co-sponsor on this, did you have anything to add, or?
No, well, I just, so, you know, I just started going on, online, and then obviously I realized that's just part of the cost, whatever, you know, equipment I saw. So I, one of the places I called had given me a list of installers, people who do this. And so I, I ended up calling this one place, and he, he was just very nice, and we had a long talk, and it turns out he did the, I said, do you, do you even go to Rhode Island? And he said, oh, yeah. He said, actually, we just, we just did a project in Newport. And I said, oh, which one is that? And it turns out it's that place right behind CVS off Bellevue Avenue, which is really more an adult workout park. And they did the, they did the installation of that project. So I was just sort of curious, and I said, well, for instance, how much was, how much was that for the installation? He said, $55,000, I think he said, and I said, but he said, well, they wanted, they needed like six inches of concrete that we had to pour, so that, that explained a lot of that cost. But anyway, so in the course of the conversation, he gave me a name of four people that they use all the time, including like the one that's in Newport, and then there was one in Jamestown, a company. So those are the companies that Justin's referring to, that I went online then and, or talked to one of those companies, and, and printed out some pictures of the kind of equipment and various price ranges. And you really could get a very comparable thing to what I was finding online at a company that sounds like it's reputable. So that's as far as we've gone, but.
The thing.
But I will say that the grant definitely calls for that the council have a community engagement, so the council should schedule a meeting as soon as possible to understand the interests of the community. They really want the community to get involved in providing ideas and.
Well, we have.
All right.
A community.
Right.
Organization that's willing to do a lot of this work and save $55,000, which you could put towards equipment, people that have already committed to volunteering, to do the work. There's a committee that's been kind of established to do this. So I don't know why we're looking to go to an outside company to do it, when we have people that are willing to do it right in town. They've been working on this for a while, just give them the approval or the okay to go with it.
I think the first, the first question that needs to be answered, if, if you're interested in looking for any grant money which is available, which would be very helpful, is the grant, they, before you get, as I understand it, before you talk about who's going to do the project, they, they want to know that the project you've come up with has, is a result of this sort of organic.
Yeah, and Stu, I believe, is willing to work on that grant.
With the Recreation Commission.
With the Recreation Commission.
Who we thought.
Right.
Who, I, I just have a little hard time because I feel like we're stepping on the Recreation Committee's toes, because they have been working on this. And I just ha, I just, I, I don't want these volunteers to get discouraged, that if they go too slow, or any volunteers, that the council will take this project off, over, because I, I don't think that's fair to these people who have been working on this.
I don't think the council's talking about taking it over.
But, but see, we have the Recreation Chairman here. Do you have any comment about this, or?
Just before we move on, I want to clarify, Joe, there, there are no proposals at all to hire somebody to do the planning or anything?
No, no.
In a longer term, in a bigger project, there would have been, there would be, I mean, if somebody was willing to volunteer and do it, that'd be great. But in the, the smaller grant, so far, all we've really just was to try to get a sense of if we had a budget existing and how much it would cost and how much would fit within a grant to buy the thing and put it in, basically. That's all we've really looked at. So there, there's been no attempt. And I just want to repeat that all of this was, this, a lot of this was just out of curiosity, digging into things. And there certainly wasn't, there was no intention or even awareness of duplicating effort. And if, if people are duplicating effort, in some ways, that's good, it's just a matter of getting them all back together sooner than later, so we can all compare notes and figure out.
Actually, I think the exact opposite. I don't think efforts have been duplicated. I think you've, you've gone on one approach, which is really helpful, and we've gone, we have some input on another approach in terms of what's available out there. I think, but let's work together.
All I know is it's been on the agenda like three or four times, so it sounds like tonight we're really getting to the meat of this, so I'm, I'm delighted.
Yeah, I just hate to see this thing fall between the, the cracks, because.
Want to jump in Recreation, let us know. Yeah, come on up. This is fun, this is a fun one.
Chris Romline again, Chairman of Recreation. Fun stuff looking at these things. So I know we met earlier in the year, we got that initial money. My gut reaction when I saw that Old Town Farm Playground go down is, we have to replace that thing right away, because I mean, I went down that slide hundreds of times, my kids, I'm sure a lot of other people have. But then, you know, the Recreation Commission, we walked around that park, and you start looking around, and really like everything there kind of has to be replaced, it's in the playgrounds area, so it becomes bigger. And I think we really have a great opportunity right now. We do have a subcommittee set up, we've got a nice group of people, good cross-section of town, some people from school, some people who are contractors in town, and everybody's really excited to work on this now, which is great. So I think we can get a good group together, I think we can hit the deadline. I worked on the Bulgarmarsh Park, when we redid that a few years ago, went through all the same stuff. We had to do the grant, we had to get the matching funds. We did that in five stages, and I'm kind of thinking this is going to be that same thing, where we have to do that master plan. Once you have that master plan, you can chip away at it. So, you know, again, that playground is a key thing, I think everybody wants to see that back 100%. So that might be like the first step we do, and then we might look at what's going on with those tennis courts, and that could become something else, could be paddle tennis, could be tennis courts, could be a mixed use area. There's a lot over there, but the key thing is doing a nice master plan that we can then use to fundraise. We did Bulgarmarsh, we had donations from Mid City Steel, from different concrete people, Cardes, you know, the construction company. People come out, when you go out and you actually have people fundraising, and you really can get your money's worth.
Chris, do you know the, the equipment that was, like the playground they took away from Town Farm?
Yeah.
That wooden thing?
Yeah.
Was that in concrete, or was it just sitting on the ground?
That was all wood.
I know that.
And you know that was 35 years old?
Yeah, it's as old as my.
But were there any pilings?
Yeah. They're just pilings in there. The, the, in fact, the, the group who made that is kind of like, reminds me of this cross-section we have moved here. You have just a cross-section of people just want to get at it. That was actually built by volunteers. They raised, fundraised 100% of that and built it over, you know, I don't know how long it took, a month. They did a good job.
Yeah.
So, you know, our intention is the same thing, and we had a lot of evaluation equipment, so the best thing of equipment is you find the brand, say where is it located in Rhode Island, find place, someplace by the water, it's been there for five years, and go look at it. That's how you tell if the equipment's good or not, because everything we put at Bulgarmarsh, you know, we found one company and they had established stuff, they had things in Connecticut and throughout Rhode Island.
Who did that, do you know?
And you look at it, and if it hasn't rusted, and it's like the paint's not peeling.
Yeah.
What company was that?
Who did the Bulgarmarsh? Do you know the company?
The equipment?
Yeah.
I can get you the name of the equipment. We have two, two different companies. We actually mixed and matched there a little bit, because we had an obstacle course, was I think stage four, and then the playground was the first stage. But it was all put in by DPW, so it was matching grants.
One of the companies this guy mentioned was something called Game Time, which turns out to be, I, I just noticed driving through Little Compton, right, right near the, near the white church there, there's a, there's a big playground. And my husband and I were just driving through, and I thought, oh, maybe there's a name of who did this one. And it was Game Time, and that was one of the places this guy mentioned.
Yeah. Well, they, they get, they're pretty fun. If you go up to Boston.
For the record, I think she just wanted to go on the swings.
The slides are great.
Did you try it?
No.
If you want to see some really crazy ones, go up to Charles River.
Yeah.
In Boston.
Yeah.
They put up these things, they're spider's nests, or spider webs, that go up about 30 feet, and the kids are way up there. They're really cool, but they're, you know, over a million dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Not for us. But you never know, you have to set your goals. But I think, again, you know, when we get our chance to, you know, have the, the group in front of you, if we get the approval, I think we have a nice subcommittee, the Recreation's still going to be operating, doing what we do, and then we would, we would proceed to get.
We're all on the same page on hitting this, this grant and this deadline, is that?
This is the one, yeah. And, and, and I think especially our timing is pretty good, because when we did the last one, when they gave it to us, they said, you know, we probably won't get one again for a little while, but, because it rotates around, it feels like it's our time to get another one.
Yeah, it's been a while, right?
And on the?
Uh, six years, seven years, maybe longer.
Bulgarmarsh? Oh, Grinnell's.
But, but that was, but that was a few years ago, and.
It's not a playground, though.
No, but it's still a recreation grant.
Yeah.
But it, it's still a good thing.
Just to finish my.
Yes.
So we always talk about grant writing and how we need it, just because I know this is a priority for everybody here, who, who will own this, who owns the typewriter for this grant application? Is that something you're willing to take responsibility for?
Yes, Recreation would take responsibility for it with the oversight of the, this, the subcommittee.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to make sure, because, you know, this, the hard part is doing the right.
We have.
That's right. And that's the big thing, is we actually got a group, because on the, on the Recreation Committee, we had like one person that was like willing to do it, but with this new group, it looks like we have like two or three people have the experience.
You've got a team going?
Yeah.
I know Stu's very.
I want to see if Patricia wanted to finish a thought, and then over to you.
So I, I, I'm, I'm going to suggest that if we're going to have a committee, and we have people with expertise who are willing to step up and get this done, that we let them do it, and not we get involved until they ask us to, because, you know, the, the people who've said they're willing to work on this, who are good people, and they all have different expertises, you know, for example, it's cool for us to look at pictures of playground equipment and talk about, well, this manufacturer, that manufacturer. At the end of the day, if you get a DEM grant, you've got to go out to bid. You don't get to just pick the manufacturer, you're going to have to follow state bid guidelines. Now, you can write the bid, so that you're going to get bids from the kind of manufacturer you want.
The specification.
And specifications. But the meantime, going on the internet and looking at, like, potentially, all we're going to do is get in their way. They have a short timeframe to get a sort of master plan in mind with some community involved, you know, however they are going to do their community involvement to it, get that grant written, and get it submitted. And us interfering, I think, is...
Can I just...
I'm not only going to slow them down a bit, but I would be discouraged. I mean, if I were to volunteer on the committee, however well-meaning this is, I think I would feel like, wait a second, you know, I feel like I was, you know, in part wasting my time and micromanaging. Now, I do have one really fundamental question about this. My understanding was that this committee was not restricting itself to only a small grant, that if they could come up with a master plan in a case to go for the big grant, they would go for it. Because I don't see why we would turn down the opportunity to go for a big grant when, I mean, you know, and restricted. And it feels like this is directing them only to go to the 50th.
No, wrong. Absolutely not. It has two stages.
Yeah.
But I really, I really just want to say, I really take umbrage, Patricia, at you telling, saying that we're doing something to interfere. That was not the intention. When I left the last time, when we were talking, and the Recreation Committee hadn't had a meeting, and there was, this was the last time we were here, and there was discussion. And I remember one of the things, and I think frankly, you were one of the people who said it, was, oh, it's really expensive, you know, make $250,000, and before you know it, you have to look at, and then you have to look at what they're going to put on the ground. And I frankly left that night and thought, this just sounds crazy. So that's what got me just looking. And I don't think there's anything wrong, and I'll be perfectly willing to share with Chris the people I, you know, the pictures I got.
It's kind of fun looking at that stuff. And I think everybody, you know, look at it.
Yeah. Nobody was trying to step on anyone's toes, and I don't like the inference.
It should be a fun process, that's for sure.
No, I just want to say, I just want to say something. I think instead of looking to have these separate groups where toes are being stepped on, that's really not a really good attitude. We're all in this town. If someone wants to do something and have, bring it to the other group's attention, we should be kind of up-told what's going on. The other thing is, is that just working together, it shouldn't be that, oh, you did this, or you did that, and you didn't. No, it, no. We all work together. If someone's got some good ideas, go, great, okay, let's include that in that. There's nothing wrong with that. I just don't understand why everyone has to stay in their own little corner and not, you know, bring something up. That's not the intention at all. It's just, what's going on, here's some good ideas, that's all I see. I have, I just don't think that's a good way to go.
Just a level set. Again, this was on the agenda a few times, so I didn't know this, had a subcommittee, so, I mean, that sounds great. So I think what I'm hearing is a shared goal. I haven't heard anybody disagree with the goal. And then the question is, I do think it is our purview to be involved in what is a priority, and so I think we could be, but what can we do to support you?
Can we make a motion to give them the go-ahead to proceed with the blessing of the council? I think, and then give us an update every so often?
That's all.
Well, I think they know it's a priority, but I just want to hear from the chair, what can we do best to support you, knowing that we do not want to miss this deadline? And I think Justin has a point, that we need at least at some point schedule for feedback. I don't know when that is.
We should set some goals. I would agree. Set some goals, set some timelines. I mean, we know right now when the deadline is for the grant, so really, the clock's ticking because it's October.
That's why I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to give them permission to go ahead.
That would be a start, at least I can officially get the group together.
And give us an update every month or two months, whenever possible, sooner, or after every meeting.
Let me hear from the administrator, and then I'll come back to...
Justin has something.
No, the administrator's...
Yeah, he's my patient. I'm just in charge.
Come on, Jan, jump in.
I'm glad it's setting in this direction. I think there is a Recreation Commission for a reason, and I think they are taking that to heart and moving on this. It doesn't mean that, you know, they should be excluding other people, or other people should be excluding them. But there is a process for us, there is a structure for this. I always get confused, because I get told all the time that, you know, I work with the commissions and boards, I'm more than willing to do so. I try to do that without being in the way, just being available that when support is needed, or, you know, some conduit between a board or commission and the council is needed, then I can do that. I think on a project of this magnitude, and when we're dealing with state grants, it might be helpful to just, you know, have my office help with that, and that the council rely on me to work with the Recreation Commission, just be available to it to make that happen. That's just my two cents on that.
And what I always say to you guys, if you see something really neat, or you have a great idea, I'll give you my email and send it to me, because that's usually what we do, people take pictures, you might talk to somebody who has a good experience, you might hear, read an article, because really, we're open to everything, and it's really all sports, too, you know? It's not just, obviously, the playground's a big thing, but, you know, could be exercise equipment, paddleball, we've had somebody send a frisbee golf, you know, area. So there's been a lot of cool stuff thrown out there, and I think we should all be open to that. So definitely, I'll give you guys my email, and totally open to any suggestions we can have.
Thank you.
I'm just thinking roughly, so, I'll let Justin take, if this thing's due December 10th, there's been a November 10th deadline to have a final decision, so we're just doing grant writing at that point, and then maybe back it up half the distance to the goal from now?
Yeah.
What do you see as a...
I mean, you'd like to get that playground, you know, spring. You'd like to see that for the spring season.
Right. But are you proposing applying earlier than December 10th? We can't apply any earlier than, or, I mean, the deadline's a deadline, right?
Deadline's a deadline, yeah.
And then they do a score.
Yeah.
So a grant is not available until much later.
And I would say, you know, we're running right now, it's next couple of weeks, we're going to get some stuff done.
Okay. I just don't want to miss deadlines, so.
No.
But applying early doesn't help us, right?
No.
Okay.
So can I, just to clarify on the timeframes here, so everybody's clear, the grant application itself is due to DEM on December 11th.
Can I use your mic, Patricia, please?
Oh, sorry. The grant application itself is due to DEM on December 11th. There's a required public hearing in front of the council before that grant application goes in. So, and they'll take unofficial minutes, but they want a, they want the council, when the grant is completed, to read the grant, have a public hearing, take public comments, and then vote. And the vote and the minutes of that meeting, the public comments, are supposed to go in with the grant application. So at some point, whatever meeting there is in December, the last meeting before that application, there should be a public hearing scheduled for...
It would have to be in November.
So it'll, so it'll...
Early, early November.
It'll be in early November. So they're on a really, really tight timeframe to get this thing written.
That's why I made my motion.
And, exactly. And I would suggest, in an effort, if we're going to help them, as far as the other public participation in that, we let them sort out how they want to do that. Because they don't have a long period of time, so for us to say, well, we're going to have a separate public hearing on this, or we're going to try and collect, like, let them figure out how the best way for them to involve the public as expeditiously as possible, and get it done, and then they'll have to come to us for that public, final public hearing.
I think the thing they have to realize is the reason for the public hearing is earlier rather than later, so that the public isn't just given their finished ideas. The whole point of the public hearing is to get input from the public as to what should be part of this playground that is for the town. If you read the grant, that's in there, so I'm just throwing that out.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Well, there's, there's two things. One is the final public hearing of the completed grant. But before that, yes, but it doesn't have to be, according to the grant, it doesn't have to be a public hearing. In other words, they can, however they want to collect their public input, whether they have like a couple of Saturday, you know, open sessions, or they have a survey online, like, they can figure out, the committee can figure out how it's best for them to get that, as long as they get public feedback into the process, they can do it however they want. It doesn't have to be just a public hearing.
So why don't we...
I've been waiting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Here's my issue with the go-ahead vote right now. I have several. First of all, I think there are somewhat different visions that can come together on this. For example, Chris, you mentioned the tennis courts, but that's getting together a master plan, all of that. It might not be doable by December, maybe it is, but if you look through the requirements for the grant, our opportunities go up by multiples if we're involving the Arts Commission or people from the arts community, this historical commission, there's a broad group of people we can bring in to talk about what should be in a master plan. And that's important right up front, because that determines what size grant you go for. If you're going for, say, a $400,000 grant, and we put in $100,000, then you want to have all of that in there, and your points are much higher. If that's not doable by December 10th, then you scale it back, and maybe you don't go quite that. But that's a question that I don't think has necessarily been answered yet. And some of the, as I mentioned, the grant does require, they do want some evidence that you're going to maintain your equipment, and part of our problem here is that that wasn't maintained, that piece of equipment fell through the cracks. So that's why I'm thinking, and all along, what you mentioned just in our meeting, I think it was last November, maybe early December, was, as part of this process of coming up with a master plan, also figuring out the government structure, who has responsibilities, is it DPW thing, working with recreation, how does that work? And that's going to require some feedback from the town government, some thought there. And finally, with regard, as Nancy suggested, the requirement for public hearing isn't, I didn't take from the grant materials, check a box, we did that. They want proof that the public has buy-in. I think there's even mention of proof that the council will, and the budgetary process will support additional monies in the future that are needed, and maintenance of the equipment. And the idea of a separate committee with new appointees who aren't, as I understand, mostly Recreation Committee members, so it's not strictly speaking a subcommittee. That was the first, I've heard of it, so I imagine it's the first, most in the community have heard of it. So this is why I'm suggesting either overlapping with our workshop next Monday, or at some other point with Recreation Commission, and us as well, because there is a government structure component to this, that we give ourselves two weeks to have that conversation, no work has to really stop. And then we can just involve, get even more feedback, we'll have even more minutes to put in the package, and we can come back much more confident that there's cross-community awareness and buy-in, and an understanding of what we're shooting for. So I don't think there's necessarily reason to do anything official tonight, where we accept to set up the next public hearing, because this is all new tonight, this is an introductory conversation, which is great, but I think we need that more structured discussion of what is it we're doing here.
Which is not from your group.
Yes.
With some Grinnell's speech, how did we handle that? Was that like a whole different ballgame?
It was the same, we had a subcommittee, which was set up, and basically, they reported to us what was going on. It was great, because we had a very small commission the last few years, we were down to like three people.
What were you talking about?
Did you say Grinnell's?
Yeah.
When you guys did the subcommittee on that?
We did a subcommittee for Grinnell's.
Yeah, but the subcommittee on Grinnell's didn't, actually, we didn't report to Recreation, it reported to the council directly.
Yeah.
And, and it was...
Because the recreation didn't take that project.
It reported, that subcommittee reported to the council.
Can I just interject with a point that Nancy's been, she and I have just been discussing briefly? It would probably be, I don't think it's appropriate for the Recreation Committee to appoint a subcommittee, I don't think it has the ability to do that, but the council could appoint a subcommittee at their recommendation, just to meet this, that's the requirement.
Right.
Is there anything else was done?
No, at Grinnell's, at Grinnell's, the council created, the council created an ad hoc committee essentially.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
So it was ad hoc, and it reported to the council, and only to the council.
Yeah.
But you had an enasling to stop the ad hoc committee, and you had a sunset on it.
Yeah.
You could actually put it on your workshop on the 30th, if you can make it a special meeting workshop.
We can appoint the ad hoc committee.
Because Grinnell's is a much longer project, though, right?
Chris, I think what Justin was referring to in the grant, it says you have to have at least one public meeting with proper public notice, no more than six months prior to submitting the grant.
Well, then it's too late.
And then, no, no more than six months before. And then you have to have another meeting before the town council with proper public notice again, to then authorize the final submission of the grant application.
Right, right.
So October 30th is really good, Dan. Good date.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so here's...
At least September 30th.
What I, what I...
September 30th.
What I think I think is, is maybe you two or you three should go have a conversation, and let's do whatever it is you want to do on the 30th.
Sounds good.
I think, what I think is consensus is, there needs to be a public hearing at least three weeks before the deadline, so you can actually take the feedback. And then there probably needs to be some kind of preliminary heads-up on what direction do we even want to go? And that sounds, what I think I'm hearing is that's your baby, and that's great.
That's it, right. Big or small, right?
You need feedback from what the government, the larger government can do to support, and that I think you need feedback from us.
Absolutely.
So maybe we can give you that feedback next week, and then whatever you think gets us to the goal line that we all share, which is to apply for this grant, I would suggest we tentatively hold Tuesday, November 12th, as the final, I don't know if it's final, but the sort of pre-deadline hearing of hearings, that gives you a whole month. Is that too late?
Either October 28th or November 12th.
So having, so having actually written one of these grants before, I think that the final public hearing, the one where the council has to vote on the grant application, that should be the last meeting before it's due, because these guys are going to be scrambling to get this done.
But what if they need to edit it?
But that's the whole point, they're not. Now, that doesn't mean that the council can't get sent to draft at some point, but in terms of that last meeting, by that time, it's ready to go. And, and, and you're, I mean, I don't know if you realize, this is a big grant to write, it's a lot of work. And it takes a lot of, and it takes a lot of research, and there's going to be a lot of statistical data that's going to have to be created. But they also have to come up with a master plan, a sort of general, it doesn't have to be finite, but in order to apply for this grant, there's going to have to be some sort of plan. I mean, we're asking this, these guys to do a lot of work, and I don't think we want to get in their way. However they want to have their public collect information session, if they want to have like a Saturday, you know, kind of public meeting, or a design shret, and if they want to have like an, if they want to have an online survey, if they want to send a survey, put it online and let people take that...
Has to be an agenda and minutes from the public meeting.
From the final public...
No, from both, from both.
From, from...
From both.
From both. But you can also submit, for example, survey results, if you have a survey taken, whatever it is. So I think we just let them sort out when they want it, when they can get this done, and let them do it, and then we just be prepared. They can come through, Jan, to us with an interim report when they get a ballpark plan of, okay, we got a general idea, here's what we're going for, and the council can say, yep, that sounds good, and then they finish the grant and bring it to us at some point. But I think if we try and stick them with too many deadlines right now, or, you know, we're just going to get in their way, because it's going to be tight, and it's a lot of work.
I just, I heard you say that twice, I'm not sure I agree. You just said it was an enormous amount of work. These guys have done a lot of work on this, we're here to support, not get in their way. And so what I, and I'm not hearing any disagreement, chair to chair here, so why don't we tentatively hold the November 12th? If we need to slip it, we can slip it, but, and then there should be another hearing. You have it, we can have it, you guys... I don't know why this is so complicated. And then to know what direction you want to go, I think we need to have at least a little, we can't possibly just assume the last hearing is truly a rubber stamp.
As much information as you guys want, right? Right? It's fine.
And then do we want to just touch base next week, and see if we've, does that?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, I'm of a mind of all and. I mean, have a survey, have Saturday meetings, have kids draw pictures. And I think Jamestown did that, that kids drew pictures of what they would want. Have all of that, it all goes into grant application, that's all great. But I think there are some structural questions to answer with the council, with Recreation.
Absolutely.
Before then. And I think our workshop next week's a good opportunity for that. And if we say at that point, all right, go get them, or if we say we need representation on this board, or whatever, that's what we answer next week, I think.
I had said it when we set this up, I'm gonna be out of town. So I won't be at the meeting next week.
There's a meeting next week?
I guess that, I didn't know there was, but I remember talking that I won't be back in town immediately.
Okay. All right, you're gonna be the grant writer, I heard that. That's the most important.
I think Stu's gonna do the grant writing, yeah. He'll likely be at that workshop next week, too, yeah. He's really taking it on his shoulders.
It almost works perfectly, because the point of, the point of Monday is this, this long-term financial plan, which a big part of it is to identify all, like, the needs in the town, which this, in a very broad way, I think, fits into that nicely, so.
And our goal, our goal really is, like, we're looking at the Cassett, too, down the road, because that's that whole part of town, and that's been neglected, too. That whole back end is prime area for some development for Recreation.
I know we have a lot of support from the town administrator on these long-term capital needs, even if the numbers are really, really big. Like, if you don't get the big numbers out now, they're never gonna get out. So this is like, this is the chance.
That's good.
Well, you gotta start somewhere, so. All right. Cool, thank you.
I want to thank Jan also, all the town administrators. He's the only one that's come to our Recreation meetings. Thank you very much for the support.
And thank you to your team also.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, it's 10:30, we're almost done. Can we hang in there a little longer?
Yep.
All right. Hey, we removed one item from the consent agenda. That was item 4A1, which were?
It was me.
Minutes, Ms. Briggs. What have you done to us?
It's just, I just, and, I just noticed, and I felt it was important, but I'll leave it up to you guys, the public comment under on page 5, 5B, I think. It says, public comment, this is on the Carpienato. One, one resident requested confirmation that the Carpienato group item would not be heard at a later time that, tonight. And I think they got requested and received confirmation. If I just, that's.
Oh, sure. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think that was from me. Okay, so, yeah, the pages are unnumbered, but this would be the second page, item 5.
5B.
B's and Bravo. Any objection to that?
Requested and received confirmation. Because we really were studious about doing that.
We were studious, like it. Okay, with that, two words. Ian. Eagle eye. We've got Nancy and Joe, nothing gets by these two. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So approve, ask someone to approve.
The second, please?
Second.
All right, all is in favor. Okay, we're in the home stretch, everybody. Waste Water District, what's going on?
I think we already handled that during the presentation. This is the announcement about the public meeting that the Waste Water District will have with the butters of the already existing sewer in the other part of North Carolina.
Okay, that, that meeting will be at September 26th. I don't know where it is, it's gonna be at the Senior Center, at 6:30. Madam Plurk?
Comments I would like to introduce. Kristin is here. She is our new reporter for the East Base Connet Times. She'll be covering the town of Old County.
Hi, Kristin.
So I just wanted you to recognize her when you see her. And secondly, this workshop agenda, I'm, so, right now, I'm gonna be putting the goals, are gonna be the financial, long-term financial plan, that item that was on the agenda the last time. I'm gonna be moving that. And I'm also gonna put on, for the Recreation approval of the committee, and discussion, it's just discussion on them, right? But I'll have to make it a special meeting if you're gonna approve that committee.
Make it a special meeting, so you don't have to take any votes.
It'll be special meeting workshop. Because you're not making any votes on the long-term, are you?
Yeah, that's, that's not the meeting to take, do you want input on Wednesday? Or, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, from the public, or just our?
Yeah, no input, it's just to get our heads around it, so.
Okay.
I mean, if we're extremely efficient, maybe we'll vote on it. Solve 100 years of financial problems.
Mrs. Solicitor, have you already covered here?
Yes, I just would add that Council Hilton asked about the circulation of the filing that was made for the town. I just reset Nancy the August 26th email, through which we circulated that, so she will distribute that again. But that was, that was the submission we did back in August.
Okay. Ooh, Holter and the Board of Elections, what happened?
I think it was a great result. The, the, the town appeared before the Board of Elections, and I, I, they simply, very simply denied the appeal of the respondent, yourself, President Holter. I'm not sure there's anything else to offer, although.
I just wanted to be, I wanted to be known that the Solicitor represented the town on the Board of Camisters, and was incredibly victorious, and did a very nice job behind the town.
I appreciate that.
APRA, oh, boy, what a close-out topic.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to make this, given the hour, I don't want to make this more than it, it needs to be, but I don't want to let it pass without just mentioning two things. One, we have an APRA request from Mr. Buchanan over there, who did not get a timely response. We had some confusion in, in how these records were delivered. They were relative to the Carpienato project. And, and because it was such a, it's a broad request, as, as is his right, and there were a number of departments that had responsive documents, and I think you all got an email from Nancy asking if there were responsive documents. Everyone responded timely, but for a variety of reasons, the formal response did not go out until just today with the, the documents, which was past the deadline. There was also another response from Mr. Daglish on the same issue, and another response, another request from Councilor Katz on the same issue. I think, having looked into this now after a few days, we, I circulated the Attorney General's letter on this matter already. I will be sending them another letter in response tomorrow, which, of course, I will circulate to the council. I, you know, I think we have a violation. I'm hoping that it's not deemed to be knowing. And Jan and I have talked at some length, Nancy and I have talked. I think there's probably more the town can do in order to beef up our policy and our procedures around access to public records. I think part of the issue was just a lack of understanding, either on behalf of new staff or boards and commissions, as to what the typical process is. If we put that in writing, I think that will make everyone's lives a little easier, and will help with transitional situations that might, might cause a little grief. I also just think we need to determine some basic things, like who is the primary party responsible? It, it, you know, it tends to be Nancy, because she's the keeper of the records, but under the statute, it's the chief executive. So is it Jan, or is it Nancy? I think they will both point at each other if they had their way. But I, I can tell you that it's not easy, it takes.
Just compared to staffing.
Yeah, I think, I think it takes a certain amount of staffing to be able to respond to these properly. And then finally, I just think we need to talk about which and, and how many of these go to the Solicitor. You know, Nancy handles lots of requests, and just fields them promptly and within her own office. Quite often, she'll send around emails, or send me an email, asking for either help or review, or whatever it is. There's a lot of sort of informal procedures that have always served us well enough. But I think we need to tie it down a little bit, formalize a little bit, talk about, you know, resources amongst the departments, amongst your Solicitor's office, and make sure we don't trip up again, for the sake of being ideally suited to, to meet the needs of transparency.
Sounds like you just volunteered for the.
I have volunteered to draft a policy, which I would suspect will take me two meetings to get to you. And we will beef up, this is the one-page policy we have now. This is 19 years old from the date on the bottom, so I think it's due.